If we could get the members to please gather and we'll begin the meeting in a moment.
They call on recess.
Yeah. Take a little break. Okay, you guys, you guys not ready? I'll see if you guys are ready. Okay.
You need more nuts than a hand, what do you need?
Good evening, good evening, good evening, everyone. The 5:00 meeting of the Sacramento City Council will come to order with the Kirk clerk. Please call the roll so we may establish a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Carr.
Here.
Councilmember Jennings.
Here.
Councilmember Chenier.
Here.
Councilmember Guerra.
Here.
Councilmember Ashby.
Here.
Councilmember Warren. Councilmember Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson. And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. Just, we'll do the pledge of allegiance in a moment, but just to explain to the public that here, or maybe watching at home, why we're starting at 20 to 7. Though the meeting was scheduled at 5, it's because our afternoon special budget meeting went overtime, and then we had a closed session, and we came back around 5:00 to finish the afternoon session. We've now taken another recess and formally begun the evening meeting, so we're sorry if we have inconvenienced anybody, and I know people have been waiting. We thank you for your patience. Let us begin, and I'm going to ask Chief Loesch to please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, members, we have more budget items, but we also have some action items tonight related to non-budget items. I'm going to propose we do this. We do the consent calendar, and then...
I do have some things to read in the record.
What, yes.
Done.
Done, okay, so the clerk has something to read into the record here, so...
So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 14 needs to be pulled off the consent calendar, and it will be heard with item 19. And Councilmember Jennings would like to recuse himself from item number 2 on the consent calendar.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, I'm going to recuse my, I don't think I need to, but I'm going to recuse myself from item 17, just so there's no challenge with that.
Seventeen, did you say?
Yeah.
That's not on consent.
Not on consent.
But thank you.
When we get there.
When we get there, okay, so it's good to note. Okay, so the consent calendar's been moved and seconded, with the, item 14 is going to be consolidated
With item 19.
With item 19. Item 2, Councilmember Jennings will be noted as abstaining on that item. Is there any public testimony?
I do have two speakers on item number 5.
Okay.
Do you want to hear those? The first speaker is Zion Taddes, and then Malachi Amen on item number 5 on the consent calendar. Zion, thank you.
Welcome.
Hi, how are you?
How are you?
Good, good. So I just, you know, I own Queen Shiba Restaurant, and I've been around for 14 years in the Sacramento community, serving Ethiopian food, vegetarian and vegan food. And I also do catering for a lot of colleges and universities and even the Capitol, you know, for Democrats in the Food and Art Departments. So I just wanted to be considered to be part of the catering events at the convention center, so that's what I'm here for, that, to be able to do some catering for the Sacramento community, if that is possible. Because this only shows one company right here, which is classic catering, doing the whole catering for convention centers, so I thought it would be good to give the Sacramento community a little bit option than just one catering company.
So, what is, staff on a recess. Malachi, why don't, oh, thank you. Why don't we hear from Mr. Men, and then we will just inquire, if you will? Okay, or Councilmember Hanson, or the city manager? Malachi?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Malachi Amen, California Urban Partnership. We're here to oppose what, you know, really looks like a monopoly on who can provide catering services to the convention center event planners. You know, in the farm-to-fort capital of America, less than 1% of the ecosystem is black, and so the sole-source contract, you know, kind of continues a pattern that we've seen since 1849. We don't necessarily have a problem with the current company, but would like to urge the council to come up with a more equitable solution. A key approach would be to add other caterers to the list, so that, you know, if, for example, I came and I wanted to have an African festival at the convention center, which would be a very, you know, vibrant, cultural, and in many cases sacred space where food is concerned, that I would have the option to choose the caterer that I'd like to for my event. You know, if this is not stopped, the one company that's on the agenda tonight will have the exclusive right to do catering at the convention center until the year 2034. And so this is not inclusive economic development. This is very exclusive economic development, and I understand that there is a $7 million commitment that was made by this company, but, you know, if there was a shared kitchen type of arrangement, we could have allowed more opportunity in that space.
Thank you both for coming forward. I'm going to turn it to Councilmember Hanson first, his district, then Councilmember Warren, and potentially the city manager. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd just first say, Queen Shiba's a phenomenal restaurant in District 4 on Broadway. I love going there when I can, and you are an amazing restaurateur. Maybe what I could suggest is, while this is an exclusive, and I think, Malachi, you point out rightfully that they're investing $7 million into the new convention center, which we need in order to build out the new kitchens, and they've been a good partner to us. They're also a labor union employer, and we've made a commitment not to displace those workers. But I know we have convention center staff here, both Matt, Jody Ulrich, the department director, and I see folks from Classique. Maybe they could meet with you and talk about what options there are to bring, whether it's Queen Shiba or other local chefs into the ecosystem, because I do think that whether it's an event that you may want to do or someone else, they've been very flexible, I've seen, in embracing various parts of the community, doing events with local chefs, and I think this could be a good, a good way to explore it. And I would, I don't know if you want to wave Jody and Matt, but I think those four folks there in that row are the ones to talk to, and I'd highly encourage that. If I can help after tonight, I will. But this is sort of an urgent thing to resolve, so they can begin doing the work on the new kitchens, and so I appreciate you coming, and I'll do what I can to support you in helping to expand the opportunity at the convention center and our other facilities.
Councilmember, I, you know, I would welcome that opportunity, but, you know, I think without policy constructs to ensure that the diversity and the equity is going to happen, you know, we could have, you know, someone's discretion be, you know, the determinant as to whether or not this happens.
Okay, thank you. Let me turn it to Councilmember Warren.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know, I am a bit challenged as well, as it relates to this exclusive right for, for one company to control all of the catering through, you know, some time probably long after some of us will be here. And it would make sense to me to...
All of us.
Well, Jay, you still may be here. But I would, I would respectfully ask the distinguished councilmen from District 4 to consider maybe delaying this vote, maybe just by one week, to have an opportunity for folks to really talk to the operator and find out if there is some collaborative approach, understanding that the current selected vendor is making a substantial commitment which we cannot undervalue. They're making a substantial commitment. However, we've been talking about inclusive economic development opportunity, and if we continue to do the same things that we've been doing, we're not going to see the progress that we've been talking about having. So I would respectfully ask councilmen from District 4 to help coordinate a meeting between these fine folks here, and there may be some others that wish to sit at the table and have the discussion, so...
I don't respectfully think it's my choice. This is a citywide asset. This is a long-term relationship. I, I know that this negotiation's been ongoing for, I think, almost two years. I don't know if staff can correct me. And so I feel like it's unfair to reset that table right now, but I do think we have a lot of city facilities, and we, whether it's the...
I'm not going to support it.
Mr. Warren, let me just...
I get it.
No, and I just wanted to finish this thought. We have other city facilities, and like Taffara Coffee House, which is a black-owned enterprise here at City Hall. We have shown an openness and willingness to do things, and I think we should continue to explore that, but I, I couldn't in good conscience unless the council votes against it.
Well, let me just say, when I think you point out one operator out of hundreds of operators that is African-American, I think it's a ridiculous analogy.
Unless this is time-sensitive here, in terms of, it has to be done this week, I think the request for a single week to have this conversation, we are committed to this operator, by the way. They've been a great operator, good operator, for all the reasons.
And nobody's suggesting otherwise.
But the idea is how this operator, which has a long-term contract, can work collaboratively with the community and the diversity in our community, I think is reasonable. If it isn't, if there isn't some consequence of waiting a week, I think that that's just a reasonable thing to, that's a reasonable request, but we want to know whether there's a consequence.
Well, and so maybe I could make a suggestion, that we could pull this item off and hear it at the end of the meeting, and in the meantime, I'll have staff work with folks here to see if there's an opportunity.
Why don't we do that, but in the end, if it's not resolved and there's, and it isn't urgent to pass it tonight, we can take that week if we need more time, okay? Make sure the process is fair. Okay, so this is, we're going to, without objection, we're going to put this over to the end of the meeting tonight, and then see where we're at in the conversation. Is that okay, Mr. Warren? You're reasonable, Mr. Hanson, you're good with that? Okay, good. Thank you very much. All right, so now, item 5, then, we are, we are going to continue to the end of the meeting. Another consent calendar moved and seconded is items 1 through 13, with, with the exception of 5, and again, Councilmember Jennings abstaining on number 2. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Oppose. Abstain. The consent calendar passes. Okay, so we'll get working on that one. In the meantime, at the request of Councilmember, one of the councilmembers and advocate here, we have a very short item, item 16, that I think we can dispense of, as long as it really is quick.
Yes, Mayor, we can be quite quick. Staff, come on forward, and we don't need much of a presentation, so please just say the portion you need to on the record for us to move forward, and the advocate is here, and so long as there is no public comment, which I believe there's not, and no opposition, they are waiving their right to speak. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Sacramento City Council. My name is Garrett Norman with the Community Development Department, and I'm here to introduce Greenbrier Phase 2. This project is largely consistent with the 2017 Greenbrier approvals. There are a few changes with the request, which is limited to roadway network realignment as part of a small lot subdivision layout, expansion of the school site to accommodate grades K through 8, and the type of housing product being built. This is all required rezones, general plan amendments, and a PED schematic plan amendment. Staff also provided supplemental material to clarify some of the general plan amendments and the rezones, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir, okay?
Thank you.
What, this is a public hearing, so it needs to be opened and closed and all that just.
It is, Mayor, and so I would move that we both open and close the public hearings, since there are no people here sign up to speak, and the advocate has waived his appearance and moved the item.
Okay. Moved and seconded. Any questions on this? All right. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. Abstain. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
We dispense with that item. That's good. Item 15, now let's go back to the, the order of the agenda. We now get to item 15, which I know a lot of people are here for tonight. Thank you again for your patience. 14's going to be folded into the budget.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. My name's Adam Randolph. I am a senior engineer with Engineering Services Division of the Public Works Department. The main purpose of this council item is to conduct a hearing, or a public hearing on seven separate resolutions of necessity, authorizing the city attorney's office to acquire property rights required for the Sacramento River Parkway Central levee, or Central Pocket Levy Trail by eminent domain. This council action does not assess just compensation, nor does it affect continued negotiations between city staff and the property owners. The project is in council District 7, along the top of the Sacramento River Levy within the Pocket neighborhood, extending from the Garsia Bend, or from Garsia Bend Park to Arabella Way. It will acquire rights needed to allow the city to construct a 1.85-mile trail segment along the top of levy. We are seeking to acquire these rights from seven properties. To provide a brief background, the Sacramento River Parkway has been envisioned by the city for 50 years. The project was identified in the North and South Pocket Community Plans adopted by council in 1969. In 1975, city council adopted the Sacramento River Parkway Master Plan. The Parkway was also adopted in the 1976 North and South Pocket specific plans, as well as the Bike Ways Master Plan. In 1997, the Sacramento River Parkway Plan Update was adopted by council, and in 2012, the American and Sacramento Rivers Parkway Plans Implementation Program was developed and adopted by council. In June of 2017, council approved this, or this capital improvement project with the express purpose of acquiring property rights to complete the segment of the Sacramento River Parkway between Garsia Bend and Arabella Way. Seven property rights are required by the city for the, or from properties located at 207 River Acres Drive, 7140, 7150, 7250, 7260, 7370, and 7454 Pocket Road. A 20-foot-wide recreational easement is required along the length of the levy from each property owner. With the 1997 Sacramento River Parkway Plan Update, a programmatic environmental impact report, or EIR, was completed and adopted by council. During the environmental review process, multiple alternatives for the project were considered. However, other alternatives did, either did not provide the same public benefit or did not adequately address the purpose and need of the Parkway. To ensure the applicability of the 1997 EIR, and that there were no additional mitigation requirements for the project, or for this specific portion of the Parkway, staff completed and council approved an addendum to the 1997 EIR in April of this year, which is in accordance with the CEQA requirements. City staff conducted appraisals, made offers, and have been attempting to negotiate with property owners for over a year, but have not been able to agree on compensation for the property interests. To date, only one of the seven owners is engaged in negotiations. Notice of this public hearing was sent to the property owners on Tuesday, April 30th of this year. In addition to the resolutions of necessity, staff also recommend the adoption of a resolution which will consolidate multiple Parkway-related projects into a single capital improvement project, and extend the limits of that project from just the Central Pocket Levy Trail to the entire Sacramento River Parkway within the Pocket neighborhood. I would like to acknowledge and welcome Ms. Groza, Mr. Murphy, the Jones family, and their representatives, who have attended this hearing and would like to address the council on this issue. At this time, staff would like to recommend that this hearing be conducted, and the city council adopt the resolutions of necessity regarding the subject property rights, as well as the resolution regarding agreement execution, budgetary adjustments, enclosure of related projects. A 2/3 vote of the city council is required, and staff would be happy to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So process-wise, Madam Clerk, the way that this works is that the property owners who are here to testify are not limited to the two minutes, but to a reasonable time, and that's decided by the presiding officer. So what we want to do is hear from the property owners first. There are three, as I understand it, and again, you're not limited to an artificial time, but succinct is always better, and we will, we will hear you out, of course. So let's call the three property owners first.
The first is Donald Murphy, Brian Manning, and then Jack Gullins. Donald Murphy. Following Donald Murphy is Brian Manning, and then Jack Gullins.
Welcome.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you. After three false starts, here we are. Public use is the justification to acquire property by eminent domain. Use which concerns the whole community. I would like to read to you from the public hearing item that I have. Section C, number 2, "The proposed project is planned or located in the manner that will be most compatible with the greatest public good and the least private injury." This goes on to stay. "In analyzing the public benefit versus private injury, city staff assessed whether the property owners would be injured in such a way that their injury outweighed the overall public benefit. In this circumstance, the resulting property impacts cause a perceived loss to privacy of property owners. This privacy loss is less significant than the benefits that will accrue to the rest of the community by having a continuous multi-use trail. Therefore, the public benefit of this project outweighs the potential of private injury to the property owners. I consider this to be a flawed report for a couple of simple reasons. I have never spoken to a city staff member. I don't even know what they look like until just now. How could they assess the injury to myself and my neighbors on the loss of our property to eminent domain? I guess that's a question to you, but what, how is this analysis done? What's the basis for it? What are the parameters? How were these conclusions reached if they didn't even talk to anybody? Now, I know they didn't talk to me, they didn't talk to Jack Gullins, they didn't talk to Dennis Jones, they didn't talk to Jaime and Catherine Fabula, and I know they didn't talk to Billy Ann Groza. Billy Ann's family has owned property in the Pocket on the river since 1968. Her father originally settled that land. She's already been, their family has been, subject to a eminent domain issue with respect to the widening of Pocket Road and a bike trail that was built on Pocket Road. Her property has been subject to continued vandalism, threats, she's suffered a lot of stress because of the vandalism, people trespassing on her property. So if you want to talk about injury, talk about Billy Ann Groza, what she's gone through. And that's not to say anything about the injury that the rest of us will sustain as a result of this bike trail being approved. I'm a native Sacramento. I've lived here all my life. I've never lived anywhere else, nor would I want to. But I'm embarrassed right now what's going on in our city. I'm sure a lot of you saw last week's edition of a national news program, where they highlighted various cities along the West Coast, Sacramento being one of the premier locations that they noticed the homeless problems we have in this town. In my opinion, the American River Parkway is an example of what could happen in the Pocket-Greenhaven area. So I ask you, is it better to spend taxpayer dollars on a bike trail, or to help fight the real problems of this city that affect all citizens? A bike trail might, the, the lack of a bike trail might be an inconvenience for some, but the homeless and the mental illness problems in this town are going to affect every citizen. Mr. Mayor, you claim to be the, the mayor for all Sacramentoans. How can that be? How is our injury as a result of this bike trail assessed if we're not even spoken to? I have some proposals.
I'm going to ask you to take a couple more minutes and wrap it up, if you can. Again, reasonable period of time. I'm going to give you a couple more minutes to make your proposals.
It's only going to take me a couple of minutes.
Okay.
I'm proposing the fact that the, the concept of this bike trail is going to be for the convenience of a few, but not for the general population. How about considering putting this vote on abeyance? Give us a chance to maybe form some local committees with representatives of both sides of the equation. How about a ballot measure, so people could vote on this? I'm willing to bet you that, given the choice between spending your tax dollars on a bike trail versus helping the city recover from the problems that it's having, that's a no-brainer to me. So I ask you to reconsider your analysis. I ask you to vote no on this resolution tonight, or put it on hold for a while, revisit it down the road, but once that decision is made, and once you proceed with eminent domain, there's no looking back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for your testimony.
Our next speaker is Brian Manning.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Brian Manning, and I'm here on behalf of the Jones family. I, I think that the council and the staff is putting the cart before the horse on this project. The reason why I say that is I know it's been on the books for 50 years. It's desirable, to use the words of the staff report, it's desirable, and there's a lot of support here, all people in the green bandanas. But that's not the test, if you're going to take private property. And if you're going to take private property, then you better have everything lined up, because it is a tremendous power that the government has. And I rewrote my presentation tonight, from what I had this afternoon, based on what I heard this evening, and I wanted to look at it through a different lens. And, and I want to piggyback on the discussion we had, or you had, I didn't, wasn't involved, but regarding the parks and youth development. I heard that the priority is the youth. I agree 100%. Parks, what we heard about parks is, when you grow parks, when you grow our park system, the money doesn't come. You don't have the same quality level of service, potentially cuts to those services. And this is in times of prosperity that we're hearing this. So why is it critical in discussing a resolution of necessity? Why am I viewing it through that lens? That's because you have to find that this is the least private injury, greatest public good. And I will, will note that the test that was written in the staff report is not entirely accurate. It's not this balancing of, does the private injury outweigh the public benefit? You have to look at what's the greatest public good, least private injury. So how do you, how do you analyze that? When we go back to the EIR, we wrote a letter when this was up for adoption previously, and it, we said the EIR was insufficient. Well, you redid the EIR and, or analyzed it, and we appreciate that. But looking at the EIR, in order to implement this project, these are, this is from the 1997 EIR that was just certified again, I guess. Impact 6.9... 1997 EIR that was just certified again, I guess, impact 6.9-1, public safety, security of private property. This is a policy. Trail segments should be implemented with sufficient funds to provide for operations, maintenance, and security of that segment of the parkway. And the parkway will be closed between sunset and dusk, or sunrise. So how do you implement that? The implementation is that the parkway shall be patrolled on a regular basis and they shall be increased in the summer when parkway gets the most use. This is what the EIR said back in 1997. Implementation of the proposed parkway policies will provide neighbors with some level of security. However, whether funding will always be available for public safety officers to patrol the parkway is uncertain. And they went on to talk about the American River Parkway. So what did they say because this funding was uncertain? They said that they consider this impact to private property to be significant and unavoidable. Nothing's changed. We haven't heard anything tonight that would allow for the implementation of this funding. Where's the funding going to come from? You're talking about millions of dollars to implement the project, to take property from these folks, to pay them just compensation, and then to maintain it. You might have some money to implement the project, but where's the money going to come from to continue the maintenance of these facilities? And without that information, according to your own policies, you do not have the sufficient information to make the finding that this is the least private injury. And then you would look at the greatest public good, where can that money be spent? Are there better places to spend that money within that same shell of the park system? I believe there are, based on the discussions tonight. So, and I also don't understand the rush to get to this point, it's been on the books for 50 years. And folks might be laughing, but there's a significant, significant number of hurdles that still need to be addressed. You need to find the funding, you don't have it. You need to get SAFCA. SAFCA needs to finish its project before this project can even get started. Where's SAFCA at? We haven't heard anything from SAFCA tonight about when they're going to finish construction out there. It could be years. There's nothing, I checked their website today, they have a plan for the Reach D up north, but they don't have anything down here. That has to be done before this parkway can be built. You have to get permits from the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. So there's a lot of hurdles to overcome to show that this is required. So I don't think that there's sufficient facts and evidence to establish that there's a least private injury, greatest public good, or that this project is required. Desirable is not the test, it has to be required before you take property. With that, if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Thank you very much, sir. We appreciate you coming on behalf of the family.
Next speaker is Jack Gullins.
Is our last property owner or representative?
That's correct. Following Jack Gullins is John Burkt.
And after this witness, we will go back to the two-minute.
His also John.
Parliament, welcome.
Thank you for inviting me here to address my concerns. I want to talk about liability, for one thing. I've looked over the plan and I can't see anything to address the problem of liability. What if someone were to slip on the rocks along the water side of the levee and have a major injury? Twice I've had to cut down ropes from my trees. People are putting up ropes and swinging out over the water. People could drown out there, and it's my property. I'm not talking about the easement on top of the levee, I'm talking about the water side. I don't see anything in the plan to address liability to me. And then privacy, my houses, my windows are about 30 feet from the top of the levee. That's about as far as from me to Mayor Steinberg. My patio is 15 feet from the levee. People just look right down on us, our patio and pool. I'm thinking we have maybe 10 people on the levee each day, average. I know most of them, their names, their dogs' names. When they open this up to the public, it's going, there will be many more people using the levee. I see them going down to the water a lot, in the future. They'll be looking into our home, especially in the evening when the lights are on, looking down onto us by the pool, walking past our bathroom windows. When I'm sitting on the toilet, I can hear them walking on the gravel along the levee. It's close. What about vandalism, robbery? People may get angry with me, and they have, for telling them they shouldn't be walking around on the levee, on the rocks. I tell them, "Don't be putting those ropes up there," and they get mad at me. They build campfires down on the sand. Things are going to change, and I don't think that the plan addresses those problems. I think that's about it. Oh, the homeless. I have a perfect, perfect place down by the water, nice and flat, trees growing over a nice flat area, there's easy access from the street in the neighborhood. In the last three years, I've seen increase of homeless encampments along the proposed project area, and I just know they're going to land on my property. Wouldn't be so terrible if they didn't, if they would at least clean up their messes. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir, to all the property owners. Now, we're going to hear from the supporters, and again, we go back to the two-minute rule and I have to step out for just a moment, but I'll be back.
Next speaker is John Burkey, then Jim Hoopd.
Hello, my name is John Burkey. I've lived in the Pocket-Greenville area for 30-plus years. I wanted to kind of drill down a little bit in this analyzing the public benefit versus private injury, maybe give you a little bit of a boots-on-the-ground observation. Their analysis and then their conclusion that they drew is deeply flawed. It says that, "Given the top of the levee is currently subject to an easement held by the Sacramento-San Joaquin Drainage District, assessed on a regular basis by city and state maintenance personnel, and regularly assessed by the general public, this privacy loss is less significant than the benefits that will accrue to the rest of the community." I live about 80 feet from the levee. I've been retired now for 10 years. As Rick's chief of staff knows, I'm acutely aware and he's very attentive to my concerns with what goes on on the levee. And I can tell you right now that I've never seen a city personnel maintenance in an area, in a maintenance area, nine-levee area. They don't have any reason to go up there, so they're not regularly there. San Joaquin Drainage District, never seen them there. It says that, "Assessed on a regular basis by the city and state maintenance personnel and assessed by the general public." The only general public that accessed that area are the ones that are breaking down these folks' fences and entering their private property illegally. So when they say the privacy loss is less significant and having a continuous multi-use trail, and they say therefore, so they're basing their conclusion on that information that is deeply flawed. So the analysis is just incorrect, it's flawed. So based on that, I don't see how they can draw the conclusion that the public benefit is-
Comments, your two minutes is complete. Thank you for your comments.
Better than the injury to the private property owner.
Thank you for your comments today, Mr. Burkey.
Our next speaker is Jim Hoopd, then Tamara Morgan, then Walt Seifert.
Good evening.
Good evening, Vice Mayor and council members. First, I'd like to introduce you to Joan Gorfane. I hope you all recall that a year ago, you honored her late husband, Dan Gorfane. Dan was too ill that night to make it here for the honors. You issued a proclamation in his honor and you named a large portion of the trail in Dan's honor, including the portion that you're considering tonight. Joan wanted me to express to you her gratitude for what you've done. Dan was honored for the long devotion to the city of Sacramento and also for his long devotion to completing the Sacramento River Parkway. Joan asks you tonight, and I join in this request, that you approve the resolutions tonight, that you honor Dan's memory. There are far too many issues for me to address tonight in terms of what homeowners have said and the representatives said, but I do want to point out one thing that the last homeowner representative said in terms of his concern about liability. Actually, he will be immunized against liability. A state law that I'm happy to cite for anybody who'd like to get the citation, immunizes a homeowner or a landowner who opens their property to recreational use. He will actually be better off when this parkway is done than he may be at the moment. I'm going to leave it at that. As I said, there's a lot more that I could respond to, but there's not enough time to do that. But I do hope that you will honor Dan's memory, approve these measures tonight, and finish what we started 50 years ago. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is, next speaker is Tamara Morgan, then Walt Seifert.
Good evening.
Good evening, City Council, Mayor Steinberg. I'm here to request that you also approve this measure, Resolution 15. I moved to the Pocket, bought a home five years ago, and Google Maps still shows Sacramento Bike Trail as one continuous trail. Actually, the bike trail currently exists in name only. Forty-one years of Sacramento City Council's kowtowing to a handful of homeowners have allowed this plan to become nothing more than a dream. I hope today, we make it a reality. The bike trail is on land that belongs to the public and is being blocked by a few homeowners. Homeowners at Chickory Bend continue to encroach on public land and block public access to a beach on the river. Blocking public access to public lands cannot be allowed to continue. I'm confident the city council can and will reverse this trend now. As I said, I've lived in the Pocket now for five years, with promises that were made to remove cross-levee fences and complete the bike trail were imminent. Mayor Steinberg has promised and Mick Jennings has concurred that these, those who stand in its way would be negotiated with to remove, or eminent domain would prevail. In the five years that I've lived in the Pocket, within two and a half blocks of the levee where I walk-
Thank you so much for your comments, your time is complete.
Thank you for your comments tonight.
Next speaker is Walt Seifert, then Jim Geary, then Cynthia Shalit.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Walt Seifert with Sacramento Trail Net. My very first public testimony was 20 years ago, and the topic was inclusion, continuing inclusion of this trail in the bikeway master plan. I want to say now what I said back then, that everybody loves the river, the river belongs to everyone, and everyone should have access to the river. And I want to add, it's also pertinent today, that I don't know if anybody, if everyone loves levees, but levees represent a huge public investment, and the public should have access to levees. I'm very pleased that we're at this stage now that we can move forward at last on this trail. I want to point out that the trail does have local, regional, and statewide significance because it will be part of the great Delta Trail. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Jim Geary, then Cynthia Shalit, then Will Kennedy.
Good evening.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Jim Geary, I have lived in the Pocket area since 1974. In 1975, the city first designated the Sacramento River Parkway and attempted to implement plans to finish the parkway. I was at the meeting on November 13th, 2012, where the city council adopted unanimously the plan to actually implement the completion of the trail. And its goal was for the continuous on-river public access for recreation and transportation along the Sacramento River. It is now seven years later. There has not been a single foot added to the continuous trail that has existed since My daughter was born here, she moved back here, she has a family here, she's lived in the Pocket area. I have a four-and-a-half-year-old granddaughter that lives within a few hundred feet of the river, and she has no access to it. She has to go a mile to get to the bikeway, and then she runs into a fence a half a mile from there. I do not expect that my granddaughter, when she's 73, is going to be standing in front of the city council and say, "Finish this bike trail." Let's get working on it.
Thank you for your comments.
Next speaker is Cynthia Shalit, then Will Kennedy, then Renner Johnston is the final speaker.
Good evening, council members. I'm Cynthia Shalit. I lived in the Pocket area for a while but have lived in Land Park a lot longer. But I tell you, when I was in the Pocket area, when I lived near Clipper Way, there were a lot of families that used that levee trail as much as they could. So there's a lot of apartment buildings there, so there's a lot of diversity in the kinds of people that would use the trail. And they'd go up there with their kids and walk down to one fence and hit the fence and walk down to the other fence, hit the fence, turn around and hit the other fence. So they're kind of locked in this little cage, walking back and forth on the river trail. This river is beautiful, it's a wonderful asset for the city, and I really congratulate you for moving forward positively and finally taking a step in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Will Kennedy?
Good evening. My name is Will Kennedy, I'm the president of the Pocket-Greenville Community Association. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of our association in favor of funding the Sacramento River Parkway. First, I'd like to start off by thanking my fellow community members in the audience who are also wearing green bandanas, many of whom have been fighting for Sacramento River Parkway for not a few years but for decades. I want to thank them for their many, many years of support for seeing this project happen. The Pocket neighborhood is the fifth-largest neighborhood in Sacramento with 26,000 residents. Greenville is the ninth-largest neighborhood with 9,000 residents. The combined population of both Pocket and Greenville gets close to 35,000 residents. We are a significant part of Sacramento, yet due to the geography of our neighborhood, our options to get to the city, to get to the city core are limited by taking a car down I-5 or down surface streets or trying to ride a bike down Riverside. Creating a Sacramento River Parkway would create a new way for our population to get down to the city. It would create a way that is not only both eco-friendly, it would be healthy, and also it would add a lot more opportunities for our youth, that I've been discussing a lot this evening. I'm a teacher at the School of Engineering Sciences in the Pocket area as well. I've, for years, had conversations with my students about how much they would love to just get on the Sacramento River Parkway and pedal on down to Old Sac or maybe a new developed waterfront. Please, take into account the needs of our youth in the Pocket area, how much they would love to take advantage of the Sacramento River Parkway. Please, respect those neighbors who've been fighting for this parkway for decades, and please support the Sacramento River Parkway. It'll be a great addition, great amenity to our already great neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
And Renner Johnston is our final speaker.
Good evening.
Good eve, oh, excuse me. Good evening, council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Renner Johnston, I'm an architect and business owner in the Sacramento region. The bike trail, the river bike trail is a crown jewel for Sacramento. It's a national treasure that we get to enjoy every day. I'm a cyclist, I'm a commuter, I ride on streets every day, and that's why I'm wearing this silly yellow vest, because it's conflicts, conflicts, conflicts with cars all the time in the street. And so this is one of the ways that we try to protect ourselves as cyclists. Having a place that you can ride without conflicts with cars is a wonderful, wonderful thing and something that we should encourage. Right now, there's this missing two-mile tooth of our bike trail that runs along the river, and I encourage you to support creating it and connecting it and finishing it after 50 years. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. That concludes our comments from the- That concludes our comments from the public. We're going to return this back to the council. I'll go to Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I want to thank everybody who came out today, for those who spoke, and for those who are just here in support. I've been on the council now, this is my fifth year, elected in 2014, re-elected in 2018. And I've been pretty consistent through those years as far as what I want to see happen in District 7. I've not tried to cover up any of the stories of my desire and love for a bike trail in the Greenville-Pocket area. I've tried to be very upfront and truthful about what I thought about this crown jewel, as it was called, or our national treasure, that I felt that it should be enjoyed by everybody. So, I know my comments that I'm getting ready to speak may not be enjoyed by everybody, but I always want to be truthful with who I am and why I feel that this is important for the, not only District 7, but for the entire city of Sacramento. So, I just want to kind of go back through the history, because this is the next step in the implementation of the city-approved bike trail. It has been 50 years since this was identified as an action that was approved by the City Council, not this particular City Council, but by a City Council 50 years ago. The city has approved and reaffirmed its commitment to the project since 1969 with the approval of the North and South Pocket Community Plans. In 1975, as was mentioned by one of our speakers, the Sacramento River Master Plan. 1976, the North and South Pocket specific plans. 1976 adoption of the city's overall Bike Way Master Plan. 1977, adoption of the new design standard to include development of the Sacramento River Parkway. In 1997, an update of the Sacramento River Parkway Plan. In 2012, with the adoption of the American and Sacramento River Parkway Plans, we got a unanimous vote for a continuous trail. Finally, in 2017, June of 2017, the city approved the CIP with the express purpose of acquiring the rights to complete this segment. I've been in the Pocket area since 1986, 33 years, and I have always supported this project. It did not make sense to me that I could go to Garcha Bend and go east and go all the way on the trail, but go west and then not be able to go on the trail. I could enjoy the river on half of the trail, but not enjoy the river going all the way to downtown and beyond. I want to thank the community and my colleagues for the support that you've shown over the years as we have moved this project forward. Although it's been slow, we have slowly moved it forward. I want to also make my clear support for just compensation for the property owners for acquiring the needed easements to open up the levy trail and construct the bike trail. I am still hopeful that an agreement can be reached with the property owners, but I also realize that this might not be the case, that we reach to an agreement. But I do feel strongly it is time to move forward, and I ask my colleagues for their support in helping us to do so.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Jennings, for your leadership, really, taking this on and after 50-plus years, actually putting the pieces together to see it through. Councilman Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. On November 13th, 2012, I sat in a seat right over there. I was chair of the Parks Commission at the time. Mayor Fargo and, oh, shoot, forgot, huh? Yes, and Rudin, thank you. Mayor Fargo and Rudin were here and testified in favor of this parkway, as did many, many people. As chair of the Parks Commission, I sat through hours of testimony about the same subject. We've really kind of gone over the same subject matter for decades, as a matter of fact. You know, bike trails are very important. They can also be very controversial. I live on the American River and represent that district, and I'm trying to build another piece of this trail, the Two Rivers Trail along the south bank of the American River. And there is opposition to that trail as well. I find that people bring up the same discussions each time. You know, they're worried about loss of privacy. It's a fair concern. They're worried about incursion of homelessness, which comes up repeatedly. Certainly, when I talk about the Two Rivers Trail, we've had rangers, police, and people from other communities as far away as Folsom testify about trails and what the repercussions have been. And over and over, public safety officials will say that more energetic use on a trail discourages homelessness, and we found that to be true. And people who fought a trail in Folsom tooth and nail after it was built now think of it as really a wonderful thing in their backyard. We've heard testimony on both sides of this issue kind of endlessly. The fact of the matter is, these kind of trails create a connectivity in the city that is really unparalleled. You know, our rivers are really the greatest source of recreation, you know, for people who live in Sacramento, to our lifestyle. And council goals are to encourage alternate modes of transportation, to lower vehicle miles traveled in automobiles, to lower CO2 gases, and create, again, connectivity so that people can travel safely on two wheels instead of four, you know, from various parts of the city to the other. It has been the vision of previous councils and the citizenry, as has been said for over 50 years, to have connectivity from Freeport all the way, basically, to Folsom. And we can get there. We keep stumbling over these problems of people's fears and what it might mean. And in fact, you know, there is a loss of privacy to some of the homeowners who live adjacent to levy. There's no doubt about that. Again, I deal with that on the Two Rivers Trail. However, when people bought there, they bought a house right next to a levy, and people have been walking on those levies ever since they were built. Certainly in River Park, many people use the levy surface to recreate, to walk, to walk their dogs, and those homeowners suffer that lack of privacy all the time. And yet, when we talk about putting a trail, and in my case, on the toe of the levy waterside where privacy is not an issue at all, people still bring up the same concern. I really feel strongly that we have talked about this for so long and have denied ourselves the opportunity to express the vision of the Bike Way Master Plans, the River Master Plans, to engage in this connectivity that will benefit the city in numerous ways. It's very much past time to go ahead and forge ahead with this project. You know, I haven't been involved in politics all that long. I've lived in Sacramento 35 years. I've been wanting to ride my bike from River Park down to Freeport the entire time. I would like it to happen, as I would like it to happen for my children and your children. And it's really a vision that has been held by very, very many people for so long that it's time to make it happen. So, I'll be in support tonight. And thank you, Councilmember Jennings. I feel for you. I know what it's like to go to the public meetings. I've been to at least one of yours to talk about the trail. You know, it's not easy to deal with disparate opinions, you know, and people are passionate on both sides of this issue. As a representative of an area, you have to deal with a lot of emotion, some anger at times. But if you look at the collective vision over a period of 50 years, and the bulk of the people really want a project, as a representative, you really have to listen to that. Thank you very much.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Harris, for your State of the Trails presentation tonight.
You're welcome.
Sorry. Just occasionally, the spirit of Steve Cohen lives on in this chair. It's the chair.
Oh, you're talking with me every meeting.
I really appreciate your leadership, Ms. Jennings. This trail proposal doesn't come to District 4 yet, but may soon touch on Little Pocket. And we've talked at a long length about this, and I know the advocates as well. I represent Little Pocket, for those of you who don't know. And I've been out on the levy there. I've talked to my residents. I also, I'm generally loathe to use eminent domain. I think that it's one of the most powerful tools we have, should be used very rarely. This is one of the very few times I've ever seen it on our agenda. The last time I can remember was for a parcel at the Golden One Center that was owned by a holdout property owner that wanted to extort the city. But traditionally, it's for roads and things of public conveyance, or to acquire and build a building. I think this is an appropriate use of eminent domain because the city has acquired the easements around this. There are very few parcels blocking the trail. But I also know that we have an opportunity here, not only to complete this project, and Mr. Jennings, your passion and your perseverance on this are a model for public service, because rarely do we get the opportunity to focus and lead in the way that you did on this. But I also know, and this is probably more for the council, as you work north, I think we should continue to, we should, while there's not money here at the moment, we should think through our city budget process of putting aside money prospectively to buy easements so that we're less and less likely to need to use this. Now, from the property owners that came tonight, it doesn't sound like you are willing, no matter the number. And so, I hear you, and I respect that. I think that's a perfectly legitimate conclusion to what people worry about with trails just generally, whether they're beautiful like the Johnny Cash trail or otherwise. Well, the council, I think, should ultimately support you, Mr. Jennings. I think it's worth saying that I don't disagree, that you have a valid point of view. However, I do want to just emphasize, as we get north, and this is where Public Works is important to me, we are going to have to figure out how to acquire more of the parcels as we get north here. And I was talking to your staff earlier today, Mr. Jennings. I'd like us to set aside money to do that, so we don't need to use eminent domain if not necessary. But also, as we get north to buy my little part of Greenville, we begin to think about how to, rather than wait 50 years, because this is 50 years of fighting, we're now concluding a portion of that, but there's still potentially a lot of years ahead of us to resolve and to deliver this trail. I have talked for several years now, and the advocates don't always like it because they don't see the beauty of it, at least the way I do, but building a protected cycle track on Riverside Boulevard from De Rosa Marina to Captain's Table will complete, at least in one way, the segment of the trail that cuts through Little Pocket. And I don't know if you got a second, Mr. Jennings?
I haven't made a motion.
Oh, do you want to make a motion, Mr. Jennings? Okay. Well, I, Mr. Harris, give me a second. I will second the motion with the intent that Public Works continues to pursue the cycle track on Riverside Boulevard. It doesn't exclude building on the levy at some point, but it will be a gap that needs to be filled, much like a denture would, where teeth are missing. We have an opportunity here to connect. Right now, what's kind of dangerous, where cyclists come off of the trail at Captain's Table by the West End, directly into traffic, and we do not have an answer for that for quite a while, for quite a while. And it will give us time to not only build the part of the trail that we're talking about tonight, to continue to work on filling those gaps. And I think it's an elegant solution to giving a functional trail and a safe trail, the connectivity it deserves. So, if you're willing to accept that intent without, you know, worrying about all the details, I would gladly second your motion.
Okay. That is a motion?
So, first, I want to make sure that we open the hearing, and then I will accept the intent as a part of the motion.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Councilman Carr?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, I agree, this is a significant action that we are considering here. Eminent domain is one of the most powerful things that we can do. So, I want to show true deference to the people who came to speak. Now, as I understand it, this project's been going on for 50 years, and one of the speakers has said they have never been spoken to in those 50 years. Could you address the outreach and how we contacted people?
Mayor Councilman Williams Bill Sinclair, I'm with the Department of Public Works. So, the intent to, notice to appraise was sent out to the property owners from the city and the appraiser. An invitation was made to the property owners to accompany the appraiser during the inspection of the property. The appraiser was sensitive to loss of privacy issues, had heard all the comments that the property owners that did attend, and took those into account in his analysis. After the appraisal was completed, I sent out offers to all the property owners. I made considerable outreach to, there was nine property owners in total. I was successful in talking to four of them, two on a continuous basis until we reached agreement and had, have signed contracts. We closed escrow with one property owner, B&amp;B Homes, and are in contract with another one, the Diaz Family Trust. The property owner that indicated that was, he was not spoken to. I have a parcel diary record of making contact with Mr. Murphy, and we had several cordial conversations regarding the acquisition, and we're still willing to speak with any of the property owners that would like to speak with us, and we'd like to continue negotiations.
Okay, thank you. And one of the speakers brought up...
No, 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 you cannot, sir. You've had your opportunity. I'm sorry. This is the council's time for, this is council's time for deliberation. You can't, it's not the way that it works.
One of the speakers brought up the issue of maintenance and security. How are we addressing that?
So, regarding maintenance and security, one of the ways that that has been addressed already is, actually, we've greatly increased our park ranger staff since that 1997 EIR was done. We have higher capacity to maintain this trail now than when we were initially looking at that trail. Beyond that, it would be an item that we would have to look into in future budgets to ensure that we're adequately maintaining that trail. That's talking specifically of security for property owners, of having patrols on the trail. Regarding physical maintenance of the trail, or ensuring that it is in good working condition, that's not actually a directive of the Parks Department anymore. That's something that is run by the Public Works Department, and that's something that's budgeted for as far as maintenance of our Class 1 trails within the Public Works networks.
Public Works is maintaining the other portions of the trail now?
Yes, it is.
And the question came up about liability. Well, first of all, we are acquiring just the top of the levy, not down to the water, or are we doing down to the water as well?
We are only acquiring a path at the top of the levy.
So, the current property owners, do they have rights down to this middle of the river?
I believe the current property owners have rights to the high watermark of the river.
To the what?
To the water level of the river.
So, the easement cuts through the property? They still have the property that they live on? We have an easement at the top of the levy, and then they still have the rights down to the water level?
Yes, they do. And that's very much, or that's very similar to the way it's current, or their properties are currently encumbered, where there is a levy easement going across a portion of their property, and they maintain rights all the way through there on either side of the levy, as well as underlying the levy. They still have those rights. They are just impaired by the levy on there, same as our recreational easement would.
So, somewhere where it drowned out there on the property owner's side, that property owner would still be responsible?
I would defer to the city attorney on that. I don't know that legal, or the legalities there.
Councilmember, I think they would depend on the facts of the case. That would be something that they'd have to seek advice from their own council.
But they wouldn't be on city property?
They would be on the, they, well...
They would be on the property owner's property. Okay. Thank you, sir.
I respect the property owners, too, but we always have to weigh the public benefit versus the private concerns, and is this necessary in order to accomplish a very compelling public objective that... And is this necessary in order to accomplish a very compelling public objective that is central to our city? I mean, I couldn't, sorry, I couldn't, in good conscience, ask the city council to put $40 million into the waterfront in Old Sacramento, and not follow through on this opportunity to create access for our people. So thank you, Rick Jennings. Really, it's great leadership. And I want to say in memory of Dan Gorfey as well. His wife Joan is here. We need to close, the motion is to close the, open and close the public hearing made by Councilmember Jennings, to move the staff recommendation with the intent expressed by Councilmember Hanson. It's been seconded by Councilmember Hanson. Are we ready? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. It's unanimous vote. Thank you so much, sir. Thank you. Pass. Thank you. Okay, we do have one other item before we get to the budget items. I don't know how long this one will be. This is the Curtis Park Village Community Facilities District. Jay, is this a long one?
We already did this one.
Jay Chenier's going to recuse himself on this one, out of an abundance of caution. Could we make this one fast, please, if possible?
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. I am Brian Wong with the treasurer's office. With me here today are John Colville, your city treasurer, along with Joe Sorrello with the city attorney's office, and Paul Petrovich and John Cox with Petrovich Development Company. By way of a very quick background, the Curtis Park CFD is located north of Suderville Road, south of Portola Way, east of Sacramento City College, and west of 24th Street in council district number five. The CFD itself was formed back in 2014. At full buildout, it is estimated that there will be 273 residential units in the CFD. CFD bonds are being issued to acquire and construct various public facilities and to finance certain governmental fees. Similar to other CFDs that the city council has authorized in the past, the repayment of the debt service on the bonds will not be an obligation of the general fund, but rather, it's an obligation of the special taxes that are levied on properties within the CFD. I recommend that the city council pass a resolution that's in your package, that will authorize the issuance of the Curtis Park Village number 2014-02 special tax bonds, and various other related documents associated with the financing. If you have any questions, I'm available to answer any questions related to the financing.
Do we have speakers on this one, madam?
And Paul Petrovich is also available in case you have questions related to the project. Thank you.
Brian, thank you so much. Are there questions from members?
No, I'll open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Second.
Eric, did you want to speak on this one? Okay. Okay, we have no public testimony. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed, abstain. Very good. Thank you so much. Efficient and very good. We now move to the two important budget items, which are for discussion only, no action tonight. And let us begin with the Sacramento Fire Department, and ask the chief and assistant chief to come forward, please.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, honorable city council members, city manager Chan, and members of the public. As you know, I'm Fire Chief Gary Loesch, and I'm the Fire Chief of Sacramento Fire Department. I was brought here with the reputation of being a strong leader with an even temperament. And in the words of the mayor yourself, those skills will benefit our city as we continue to grow while maintaining excellent service for our residents.
Did I say that?
You said it.
I did, well. Good.
That's good. I've spent these past eight months assessing the fire department and the need for critical resources to address the continuing growth of the city's population, infrastructure, and call volume. And also, following NFPA 1710, which is for best practices, which is the standard that sets minimum criteria for the effectiveness and efficiency of emergency operations to protect the safety of the public and the, and fire department employees. I believe that the city manager's proposed budget reflects the necessary augmentations to help us, the Sacramento Fire Department, move in the right direction. As I think we all can agree, public safety should always be one of the main priorities for any city. So with that, I am happy here to present tonight the budget priorities for the coming fiscal year. Over the past year, the department has looked at several ways to find efficiencies. With the continued increased call volume, our department has implemented a discriminated dispatch. As much information as possible about an emergency is gathered prior to sending resources, the department has modified its response to some medical aid calls that have a high likelihood where the patient won't require transport to an emergency room by an ambulance. And we are also not sending, for instance, battalion chiefs on alarms where it has a high likelihood of being a false alarm. The department has levered technology to maximize cost recovery, and has gone 100% paperless in our EMS billing. In the technical service portion, we have also implemented paperless inspection reports, had a large portion of our ambulance fleet upgraded to gas-powered units, upgraded our station alerting systems on all of our fire stations, and with the assistance and support of other city facilities, opened our brand-new fire station 15, serving the community of South Natomas. This slide illustrates fiscal year 19 amended and 20 proposed budget summary. The fiscal year 19 has some adjustments in labor costs due to unfunded academy and the ongoing overtime labor costs. Some of the proposed changes on the bottom of the slide are to right-size our department, adding resources where they are most needed in the city. You'll see in more detail regarding the added positions in the following slides. Use of the current Measure U funding has sustained the service level post our economic recession. The funding has been used to keep four of our engine companies and one truck company open. It has also taken over funding for 27 firefighter positions that were originally supported by a SAFER grant that has now reached its sunset date. It is important to note that the Measure U funds brought the department back close to a service level equivalent to what it was before the recession. The department, however, continues to see a rise in service demand with every year that goes by. Some of the proposed general fund augmentations include the six full-time positions needed to staff Medic 15, which now serves North Sacramento. This unit has improved response times and assisted with addressing the increasing calls for service. The fire service measures workload by unit hour utilization. This is a figure that determines the amount of time an ambulance or company is committed to responding to a call, providing service, and transferring care to a hospital. The industry standard for maximum unit hour utilization is currently exceeded by 16, excuse me, exceeded by 16 of our 17 current ambulance companies, including Medic 15, the one that we just put up. Additionally, the request to fund a bike medic program is critical to appropriately support a mobile medical resource for large events in the city. The bike medic program will be deployed to support events such as the AMGN race and the California International Marathon. This resource also can be used to be deployed for any protest where crowds become mobile and move throughout the city. The department is also in need of bringing back the 4th Battalion into service. This resource was lost just prior to the recession around 2009, and bringing it back will assist in the restoration of service levels to meet the demand. The department currently deploys three battalion chiefs as the first-line supervisors for all of our emergency needs. The battalion chief is a command resource on every working fire, rescue, hazmat, or any complex incident where resources coordination is needed. They assist as command officers on wildland fires. As we're all aware, last year proved to be one of the worst wildland fire seasons in state's history, and early projections show that this year could even be worse. Our battalion chiefs led Sacramento crews as an initial response to the communities immediately affected by the devastating car and camp fires. As most of you are aware, our department responded to the Blue Diamond facility last week, which was a tremendous strain on our resources. We actually had 112 of 139 working firefighters on that particular incident that night. That, the Blue Diamond, and Councilman Hanson, you would know even better than I, is about a billion-dollar asset in here in the, in the city, and that, they have 3,600 almond growers that actually supply that, the Blue Diamond factory there. And we were very fortunate that we were able to save it. It is still partially shut down, but production has returned, and there's 2,500 workers that were affected in that, in that work for Sacramento, well, live in Sacramento or surrounding areas. So we were lucky that we were able to get that brought back up online as much as we've been able to so far.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind. Chief, I just want to thank you and the fire department, not only for the response on Blue Diamond, which is clearly something that everybody knows about, but we had an arson of two significant historic homes. One home adjacent had just been renovated. We did a whole home tour in Capitol Mall with the property owner, and when I called her to check in on her afterwards, she told me about the extraordinary lengths that your firefighters went through to help save her property, to move things out of the way, rolled up rugs. You know, we're extremely thoughtful. And then I guess you came back personally to talk to her, and that meant so much. These historic homes with balloon framing, they can go up, well, like Notre Dame, unfortunately. And so we just need a quick response, and you provide that. And I think it's really, those two examples are perfect examples of why I think these restorations are helpful, but I wanted to thank you personally.
I appreciate that, thank you.
More the people with the hoses and the axes, but you too.
Well, I appreciate that, and that's one reason why I chose to come here, is because of the fire department.
Some of them may be in the room holding signs, and if you were on those fires, I really appreciate what you did.
Thank you. So just to continue what I was saying there, at the same time as the Blue Diamond fire, there was actually a residential house fire that occurred in the south area of the city. And this isn't uncommon for the department to respond to and manage multiple complex incidents simultaneously. Luckily for our partners outside of the city, our resources were all at the Blue Diamond fire, so I was dependent on, on a command structure, battalion chiefs coming from Consumnis and Sacramento Metro to cover that fire force while we were on this particular incident. Our department has continued obligations to meet mandated training, as well as maintaining our hiring to keep up with attrition. The department's training, the department's training division has only two funded training captain positions, and goes immediately into a cost overruns when the recruit academy is in session. The request for funding for four needed training captains and the 25 recruits into the budget would assist in these cost overruns. Additionally, the captains would right-size the agency to meet the mandated training to all department members throughout the year. The department's administrative additions include adding a civilian member to track all the department disciplinary cases. As you're all probably aware, many of these cases are time-sensitive and need close coordination. We are also looking into adding a civilian public information officer that can coordinate quick updates on all activity of the department, and assist in managing social media accounts and timely dissemination of information. The logistics stores administrator and two staff aides assist the department with vital equipment and supplies in a manner that is consistent with the auditor's recommendation. The operations admin tech position is critical for the daily staffing of our department, fire department stations. These responsibilities are not currently staffed seven days a week, and having these positions will return the battalion chiefs back to their primary responsibilities, as well as decrease, decrease the amount of overtime. Again, what we're talking about here is, I'm trying, by adding some civilian positions, I'll be able to put firefighters back in, back out on the line, which will reduce our overtime.
Got a question, chief.
Sir.
Could you go back to the previous slide? $1.2 million will get you 15.5 FTEs.
Yes, sir. That will be the four FTEs for the captain, and then the .46 FTEs times the 25 recruits, and that is the formula that's used because they are not full-time or fully paid at the time.
I see.
Come on.
Okay. The department continues to leverage grants, not only for special programs, but for daily operations and necessary equipment. Our National Urban Search and Rescue Program provides $1.1 million in annual funding for equipment and training of our personnel, in the event they are needed here locally or dispatched anywhere in the country. As we've seen every year, we've dispatched California Task Force 7, which we're a member of. The State Homeland Security Grant has been utilized to assist the department in keeping our dated rescue equipment in service and compliant to regulations, as well as the Assistant to Firefighters Grant that is used to support the department in the, in the critical equipment. Most recently, we used our new source capture system that prevents personal contamination from diesel exhaust in our fire stations. And with that grant, we were able to get $900,000 that we were able to put, to augment money that was used by facilities, to put those into the stations. The department's current capital improvement plans fund mandate purchases like our department's personal protective equipment, which is, for instance, has a 10-year shelf life, gurneys, cardiac monitors, and our fleet, which range anywhere from 12 to 15 years is the shelf life of an apparatus, which all, which are all lifesaving equipment, and again, that I spoke about, have a shelf life. Moving forward, the department continues to work towards identifying key objectives. One of our highest priorities is to continue to assess and adjust our medical response. We specifically want to send the most appropriate resource available to meet the needs of that particular reported emergency. There's been a tremendous effort towards developing programs and relationships in youth outreach programs to improve department diversity. The department has agreement, agreements are partnered with Valley High School, Interchem High School, and the Health Professions High School, giving young students the early skills and pathway to entering our profession. The department continues to leverage technology to find efficiencies and improve response times, add to firefighter health and safety, as well as increase our service levels to meet increasing demand. Our priorities continue to be aligned with increasing our level of service to meet the demands. Our outreach and recruitment programs address department diversity and our ability to give a pathway for our own citizens who are looking to join our profession. We have been addressing the increased need of firefighter behavioral health in light of national trends that point to increased mental health issues that plague first responders. We continue to work towards a mobile integrated health program to have the most suitable level of patient care. We also have a tremendous volunteer programs that give our citizens the opportunity to join forces with our response personnel. To recap, with all the efforts and programs that the department's been working on, we have prioritized this fiscal year spend plan to meet our highest priorities. We are looking to add resources where they are most critically needed, continue to utilize technology for added efficiencies, and appropriately fund the programs the department needs to move into the future. Thank you.
Thank you so much, chief. Appreciate the thorough presentation. We do have a number of speakers here, so why don't we hear from members of the public?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have 13 speakers on this item. The first is Josh, Josh Halsey, Ty Bailey, then Chris Harvey.
People of this council, thank you for hearing me. My name's Josh. I've been working for our fire department since 2002. I've been a resident homeowner since 2006, and I've raised two children here. I voted yes, attacked myself on Measure U, and here's why. Sacramento began as a vast tent city to the west of Sutter's Fort. It was so hazardous that it soon burned to the ground. The community responded by funding the first-paid fire department on this side of the Mississippi. The original Sutter's Fort was largely dismantled, so that its bricks could build some fireproof structures which still stand in Old Sacramento. In this way, the fire department, the building code, and residential enforcement was always about city safety and durability. Ignoring these standards now is to ignore our own history. Squatting fires continue to cause this city its buildings, its legacy trees, and they cause damage to infrastructure, like the times when a mattress is burned inside of a freeway. A common morning 911 call is from someone who has come to open their store for the day, but has found someone has established a camp, made a mess with garbage, glass, and feces, and is still lying there unconscious. Many businesses here on I and J Street have responded by installing black iron fences to cover their frontages, and they've hired some unsung heroes to pressure wash these sidewalks at 4:00 a.m. every day. I deeply empathize with the homeless. They're just trying to get out of the rain, to get warm. They want to feel safe, and they want to avoid pain. They want to feel safe, and they want to avoid pain. I've been to many of their deathbeds, and I've carried their bodies in my hands. The pooping on the sidewalk and in the river's got to stop, or we'll all get sick. The garbage in the bedding has to be picked up, or rats and body lice will continue to run rampant. The fires have to be put out, and the violent need to be arrested. These all call for services and codes that we already have. I voted yes on Measure U to sustain these and keep Sacramento from having a gross front door. Lastly, I believe individual homeless people need sustained case management and group support. Places like Mary House and Union Gospel Mission are local success stories which I believe work, and I would suggest you use as models. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Ty Bailey.
Hi.
Next speaker is Ty Bailey, then Chris Harvey.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Ty Bailey. I'm the Local 522 President representing the Sacramento area firefighters. I have a few things to speak on this evening, one of which is Measure U and how it pertains to the Fire Department budget. First and foremost, I stand in opposition of moving money into an economic equity bond, which is going to tie that money up from Measure U that the citizen and taxpayers voted on for essential services. I, I stand here and ask for your support of essential services from each of your respected areas, and use that tax revenue from Measure U to support public safety. There are three items that we use in our independent expenditure when it came to Measure U, and they were very, very good with the community when we spoke to them. There was three components: people, parks, and public safety. Very simple, very catchy, but it got us over the hump, it brought money in, it got us to the recovery point over the economic downturn during, the downturn two thousand and eight, and I thank the Fire Chief for going through the objectives and the mission and everything that we've got back, but we need to do a better job. And it's your job tonight to vote to do a better job for the community, for the public, and for the firefighters that represent the city of Sacramento. I, I heard a little bit about NFPA, response times, infrastructure, and we feel like the city needs to do more, and it's important and imperative that Station Nine is funded in this next budget cycle. It's ready, we need staffing, and it needs to be in your budget process, and I appreciate you for the time this evening. I don't think I've talked this fast in two minutes in a while, so, thank you, and I look forward to a conversation in the future, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you so much, Ty. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Chris Harvey. Chris Harvey, then Doug Murakai, then Mike Giles.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager. My name is Chris Harvey. I'm a paramedic firefighter with the Sacramento Fire Department, but I'm not here tonight as a representative of the Fire Department. However, rather, I'm here as a lifelong Sacramento resident and a homeowner in Midtown. I'm here tonight because I'm alarmed and dismayed by the mayor's plans to divert funds from Measure U for his own special projects. I voted for Measure U and encouraged others to vote for it with the explicit understanding that the funds were going into the general fund and would be used to restore and right-size Sacramento public safety departments. It was very clear to those in our city who were paying attention at the time that Measure U was headed for a resounding defeat until Sacramento firefighters supported the measure and began campaigning for the public to vote yes. I was among the hundreds of firefighters who walked neighborhoods, put up door hangers and lawn signs, and talked with residents. Everywhere we went, citizens were assured that a yes vote would be used to fund police and fire as promised. For years, city leaders have cried poor when it came time to spend money on public safety. Not only has the Fire Department not kept pace with the growth of the city, it has actually gone backwards. During the recession, Fire Department positions that were cut have still not been reestablished. As calls for service continue to increase each year, firefighters continue to run more calls and do more with less. As a Sacramento resident, I have watched as an unprecedented building boom has taken over our city. Everywhere I look, new buildings and homes are being constructed. I have watched as marijuana cultivation businesses have proliferated. Taxes and fees from these and other projects pour into the city's accounts. With the passing, passing of Measure U, city coffers are now flush with funds, and the opportunity finally exists to right-size police and fire departments. I urge the mayor, mayor to drop his plan and to keep the promises he made to city residents when he asked for a yes vote on Measure U, and I urge those council members who support him or who may be undecided at this time to vote no on the mayor's plan. Keep your promises to the citizens of Sacramento and use those funds for the purposes for which they were intended. Thank you.
Doug Murakai, and then Mike Giles.
Uh, good afternoon. My name is Doug Murakai. I'm a thirteen-year proud member of the Sacramento Fire Department. I'm also a third-generation Sacramento County city resident, reside in East Sacramento for the last twelve years. I'm here to talk to you about Measure U. When we initially voted for Measure U back in two thousand and twelve, Sacramento residents voted to restore public safety. Yet the citizens still have not recovered Battalion Four, Station Nine, and numerous support positions in admin. But we still pay those taxes for those positions, but we just don't get the services. Fast forward to now, we have, we have just passed another Measure U tax under the assumption that the money will protect and enhance public safety services, including nine-one-one response, fire protection, community neighborhood policing, et cetera, and that is copied directly from the ballot that we voted on. Yet out of this a hundred million dollar money that Measure U is going to provide, two and a half percent right now is your mark for public safety. So my question is, how do we intend to not only fulfill our obligations to the taxpayers for the first Measure U, but also protect and enhance public safety services as promised on the ballot of this last Measure U? I do not agree with where the money is going to be spent based on the mayor's proposal. I do not agree with placing the money into a bond. I voted yes to protect and enhance public safety services for my children, my community, as was stated on the ballot. Sacramento's population has increased year over year, Fire Department's call volume has increased year over year, yet the staffing for public safety and the services that the Fire Department are able to provide have remained stagnant due to a lack of funding. I support a budget that benefits everyone, and I believe we should take a strong look at the budget that the City Manager has proposed. Not only is it balanced, it benefits everyone, and it is not going to put the city in jeopardy in times of an economic downturn. So, thank you again.
Next speaker is Mike Giles, then Jennifer Erdl, then Zach Sadoronza.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. My name is Mike Giles, thirty-one-year veteran of the Sacramento Fire Department. We have an abundance of solvable problems in our department. We closed Station Nine and Truck Thirteen twenty years ago. We have ambulances running double the NFPA-recommended maximum call volume. This results in large gaps in our emergency medical coverage in the city. We have insufficient number of fire companies for Sacramento's burgeoning call volume, resulting in dangerously delayed response times. The result of this is an anxious and concerned citizenry. I used to think that such an underfunded Fire Department was a bad thing, but I was wrong. You see, there is a benefit. An underfunded public safety is a segue to raise millions of dollars for special interests and pet projects. It's a four-step process. First, you create a public safety measure to raise millions of dollars. I would phrase it just like Measure U. Step two, after it's approved, you come up at the last minute with some confusing bonding language that is meant to sow confusion and divide people. Three, you take those funds and you move them from the general fund cup, you put it under a different cup, you move the cups around. Four, and most importantly, you don't allocate enough money to fix the problems in the Fire Department. Everyone knows that anxious and concerned citizenry is more likely to approve another public safety measure down the road, so we can repeat the shell game all over again. One of my colleagues who was really recently pressed said, "Aren't you happy we're allocating millions of dollars to the Fire Department?" I'd like to answer that. Reality is, the millions that are currently earmarked for fires, fire will not solve a single one of the issues I've raised.
Mr. Giles, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment?
We will be happy when the citizens of Sacramento get the Fire Department they deserve and the safety they deserve. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Erdl. I'm a resident of this city, raising three children here, all of whom attend Sacramento City Schools. I'm also honored to serve the city as an engineer at Engine One downtown for the Sacramento Fire Department. As a mother and firefighter, I believe strongly in the value of public safety. In November, I voted yes on Measure U because I believe in the measure's purpose. I voted yes because the ballot stated the measure would protect and enhance essential public services, along with other essential services. Tonight, I stand before you to express my deep concern and disappointment in the mayor's plan to leverage Measure U funds into a twenty-five-year commitment to fulfill the mayor's vision. Having a vision for the future of the city is important, but Measure, the Measure U ballot said nothing of leveraging revenues for someone's vision. The ballot stated that the tax generated is legally required to stay in the city's general fund, not in an economic equity fund. I am outraged that the public has been duped. The measure was placed on the ballot, the residents voted to approve the measure, and you hoped that the citizens would suffer a bout of amnesia, a classic bait and switch. Well, I'm here to tell you I haven't forgotten what I voted for. My coworkers and I were part of many groups that backed the Measure U campaign. Do you remember? Business, community, neighborhood leaders, public safety officers, and firefighters? These groups trusted in you, and they put their reputations on the line to campaign for this measure to support the programs and services that are a foundation of a safe, inclusive, and growing city. I implore the council to follow the intent of the ballot as written, to continue to protect and enhance the public safety services and other essential services, and to maintain something that costs nothing: the trust of the citizens of this great city.
Zach Sadoronza, and then Robert Padilla.
Good evening. My name is Zach Sadoronza, and I live and work in the city of Sacramento. Council, please keep the Measure U money in the general fund for city services as it was voted for under those conditions, and anything else would be a bait and switch. Measure U money should be spent on essential city services such as for public safety in the Fire Department and Police Department. This is a great opportunity for the city to help improve public safety to match the large growth in population that the city has had over the past several decades. Public safety is the most important to me because it addresses the human's most basic needs. I didn't vote yes on Measure U for the mayor's vision, but I voted yes to increase public safety services. The mayor is trying to bond future monies for Measure U for his personal agenda instead of keeping it in the general fund. This was not on the ballot, nor was it voted for. This is a classic political bait and switch. Hold the mayor accountable and do not pass his proposed budget. Please improve response times in the city Fire Department by restoring Station Nine this year and start developing a plan for fire protection in the rail yards and other areas that are being developed. I want more of the Measure U money to go to increased fire services to help improve public safety for the public. Our community deserves to have the best Fire Department coverage possible, and currently our city has the money to provide this service for the citizens, but our mayor is preventing this possibility. I do not support the mayor's plan for Measure U money, and I want the money to stay within the general fund. Thanks.
Next speaker is Roberto Padilla, then Francisco Villa Pando.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Roberto Padilla, 522 spokesperson. Mr. Mayor, last time you asked me what I think about the additional allocation of funds to the Fire Department, that was not the right time or place. Tonight is the right time or place, and it is the right topic. While it's a great start, it falls far short of what we need. I heard you today talk about decades-long argument about a bike trail. We're looking at decades-long argument about the augmentation of the Fire Department. Excessive response times and excessive call volume are affecting the mental health of firefighters and putting public safety at risk. You have the funding needed right now to make those changes that will affect our city and the residents that live here for decades to come. We need your help. We need the resources. How much more are you going to ask from our members, and how much more are you going to ask of efficiencies of a Fire Department that has been completely overgrown by the citizens that they serve? This is not an opinion, this is a fact. Your own report called for up to four new fire stations to be added to the broken system, yet Station Nine is still not open, Station Fourteen is not replaced. This is unacceptable. All we're asking for is resources to better serve the community. That's what they expect. That's what we're trying to deliver, and it feels like it's always an uphill battle. We've been through three mayors, and we always get the same. Let's have conversations. Let's have dialogues. We've had them. The public spoke. They voted for Measure U under the pretense that it would go to public safety, and that's where we would like to keep it. Keep the money in the general fund and give us the resources that we need. That's all we're asking for.
Francisco Villa Pando, and then Robert Nags.
Chiefs, Council, as you can see by the turnout tonight, you struck a nerve with us. Your planned use of Measure U money and general fund appropriation is downright deplorable. Daryl, that's what you wanted us to call you, right? When you did a ride-along back in September with myself and the crews at Station Two. During that shift, we tried to show you the importance of our staffing, the demands of our job, and highlight some of the needs that we have to properly run this department. We attempted to show you what it takes to adequately protect its citizens and those that visit our city. You, Mr. Mayor, seemed truly interested in making a difference and appeared committed to improving the Fire Department. I believed you one hundred percent, and I even talked you up to those that I work with about just how much you actually got it. I can see I was wrong. You played the politician smoke and mirrors perfectly. Maybe you're still upset that Local 522 didn't endorse you. Maybe you were never really intent on properly equipping the Fire Department. Your true colors have shone through once again, and I'm extremely disappointed that I believed you wanted to help the Sacramento Fire Department. It is very clear to me now that you will say what it takes to get what you need, then fall short on doing what's right. As for the rest of the council that's siding with the mayor, you now have an opportunity to stop making a name for yourselves off the backs of the hard-working employees of this city and stand with them instead. You now have the finances and ability to truly correct the funding of the essential city services like fire, police, parks, and libraries. But do you have the courage to do what's right for our community or just what's best for your political career? It's clear that you have no problem asking us for a photo op or to walk your district to get something passed on the ballot, which is exactly what you've done once again with the passage of Measure U. Shame on most of you for saying you support firefighters in public safety in word, but never in any real action. Shame on us for still believing you. How many times will you elected officials ignore the master plan and standards to cover and not advocate what you also paid for that shows Fire Department needs more resources? It is extremely apparent that we are just a line item to you and a necessary evil. Lastly, I, no we, would like to thank you, Councilmember Ashby, for being the only member of this council who is a true leader and true believer in the importance of public safety for the residents and guests of Sacramento.
Robert Nags, then Chris Andrews, then Elaine Jackson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. City Manager, members of council. My name is Robert Nags. I'm a representative of Local 522 and a firefighter here in the city. I represent nearly six hundred firefighters serving the citizens of the great city of Sacramento. As you can guess, I share the opinions of my colleagues in respect to the budget and economic development, excuse me, in regards to the budget and the economic development plan as posed by Mayor Steinberg. Though not completely satisfied with the commitments to the fire resource needs, I too believe the City Manager's budget represents a fiscally responsible approach to financing the critical needs of the city. As to the mayor's economic plan, I'd like to tell you a little story. I grew up in San Joaquin County, Stockton kid. I started my ambulance career there. I was, I'm really good friends with a lot of folks in the Fire Department there, and we've discussed a lot of the details of their economic downturn and their, their situation when they lost the pension holidays in two thousand and seven. Stockton had not budgeted for the, for the liability of their pension for quite some years because the pension holidays had been forgiven by PERS. Once, once they were saddled with the millions of dollars in PERS contributions and retiree health costs, they had no way to pay those bills. To manage this unfunded liability, Stockton leaders elected to sell off a hundred and twenty-five million dollars in pension obligation bonds, which provided significant influx of revenue outside of the general fund. Because the dollars were outside the general fund, there was no oversight, and they chose to spend that money in other ways than specifically on their pensions. Because the dollars were outside the general fund, there was no oversight, and they chose to spend that money in other ways than specifically on their pensions. When the downturn lasted longer than expected, there was no way for them to recover, and they became insolvent. So, I'm not an economics expert. I stand before you asking the question. What happens when the city of Sacramento sells all these bonds and the economy turns? What happens when we have no avenue for recovery?
Mr. Nags, your two minutes is complete. Will you make your final comment?
Mr. Mayor, you stood up before us and you said you're the visionary. You're the one who came up with this. You're the one that pushed Measure U through. Are you going to be the one that stands up and says, yes, I was responsible for the insolvency of Sacramento? Thank you.
Speaker is Chris Andrew then Elaine Jackson and then Theodore Tully is our final speaker.
Evening, Mayor, City Council. Chris Andrew, Local 522 Vice President, has some prepared comments, but I think my members have made the points for me. I want to thank all of them that had the courage to come up here and publicly speak because you know how difficult that can be. I want to thank all the members that stand behind me with the signs to show you their frustration because that's what it is. We're tired of being ignored. We're tired of feeling like we're not of value. Like I said, there's value when there's a measure that needs to be passed. There's value when the city's in a recession and they need cuts. Firefighters, what can you do? We always step up. We've always stepped up. When the recession hit, we gave back. We ran with six brownouts to make it work. We have ambulances that are completely overrun with call volume. We can get more ambulances, but we got to prove, prove every single time that we can provide the revenue for the ambulance or we don't get it. When this city was in trouble in 2008 and 2009 and wanted to bring things back, who stepped up? The firefighters again, with some help from other people, but we led the charge to get Measure U through. And it was just like President Tyce Bailey said, people, parks, places. We were here for, we didn't send, build a tax just for us, although we have the needs that need to go to the fire department. We could have spent all that money in the fire department, but we know that the whole city need help, but we were there. When this happened, when the new Measure U came through, Mayor, you know that we didn't support it at first because we thought you were taking too much risk. But you placed everybody at risk because you had an all-or-nothing approach. We either do one cent or we do nothing. We had no choice but to get on board, and I know that you remember when I told you that we didn't support your vision and we supported essential services. This council needs to stick with funding public safety, bringing back Fire Station Nine, funding the police and fire department, and dedicating that money to just the general fund and essential services. Thank you.
Hello, council. My name is Elaine Jackson, and I currently live in the city of Sacramento. I also was born in the city of Sacramento. I retired from the city of Sacramento after 28 and a half years working for the Sacramento Fire Department. When you presented the proposal for Measure U, I immediately went out with my union and walked door-to-door trying to help you pass Measure U. I not only did that, I also went out to my neighbors. I talked to my family. I talked to my friends and asked them to support Measure U. I am very upset currently that you are changing this now and what you're proposing now to do with Measure U. The Sacramento, City of Sacramento Fire Department has not been fully funded for many, many years. It was when I first came on the City of Sacramento Fire Department, but it hasn't been for many years now. And I'm very upset that it seems that you guys don't take this seriously. It seems like you've turned your backs on the fire department in doing that. I don't know why. You know, you should be asking this question to yourselves. But I am very upset, as well as many other people, for you doing this. And I'm sure a lot of the citizens don't even know that you're doing this right now, but they should. You guys have a responsibility to do the right thing here and do what you said you were going to do. Fund public safety and fund city services that are necessary with the Measure U money and not change what you're going to do with it. And I hope you do do that. Thank you.
Theodore Tully is our final speaker on this item.
Good evening, City Council members, City Clerk, City Attorney, City Manager, and Mayor Steinberg. My name is Theodore Tull, and I stand before you as a resident, a homeowner in District Five, and an aspiring small business owner, and lastly, as an employee of this great city of Sacramento. I'd like to voice my feelings regarding Measure U. I, as many in this room, stand in opposition with Mayor Steinberg's plan to bond future money to be used and projects to be later named. My belief and understanding is that Measure U money was voted for and agreed by the residents to stay in the general fund and be used for improvement in city services. I posted signs in front of my home, I spoke with my neighbors, and I urged my local friends to vote yes on Measure U for many reasons. Mainly because I believed in the original message of Measure U, which created a full-sent increase of the tax rate. I supported the measure for increases in police protection, code enforcement, parks, libraries, and community projects, oh, and also the fire department. I also supported the measure because I understood the all-or-nothing approach that would have decimated this city by having to cut all services by $50 million. I'm a hard-working and proud member of the Sacramento Fire Department. Have the pleasure of being assigned to work in both District Four and Five, which is my home district, but also regularly work all over the city. I also have the pleasure of sharing my ambulance with you, Mayor Steinberg, for a very small sliver of time in a ride-along that helped you grasp a very basic and small sliver of what we do for this city. I understand and see the exponential growth that is occurring with new construction, a growing economy, and population boom. I also see an infrastructure that is currently at capacity. The intention of Measure U is to support and increase these essential services to meet with the demands of a growing city. If these funds are used for other unmentioned and to be later-named projects, I am truly worried about services being cut in the future, not just in the fire department, but all cities, all city departments and divisions. In closing, I will again say that I do not support the major plan for measure money and wish the funds to stay in the general fund. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you all to all the members of the public and 522 for coming tonight to testify. Are there any questions, comments from members of the city council? Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the firefighters who are here and those who aren't here for everything you do for our city all the time and for being here to advocate for the department. One of the reasons that I'm always sort of struck by public safety, both police and fire, and parks for that matter too, is that I often feel like you're here advocating for things that are actually for the community, like more ambulances or more resources or things that would make it better for the people who live here, which makes it easy to support you. Because I want to support my community having the best fire department possible in the city of Sacramento so we can save as many structures and save as many lives as we can. And I think that my colleagues share those concerns, and I hope that whatever decision is made with this budget reflects those values as well. But Chief, can I ask you a couple of questions? First of all, I'm very glad and city manager, it's really great to see the academies funded. I'm sure that is a big relief to you, Chief, because trying to fund those academies and keep adding to your team is very difficult without...
We're asking to get them funded.
Yeah. I'm glad to see it in this budget, yes. And the Fourth Battalion is also funded in this budget, correct? So that's three FTEs?
Correct.
That's good as well. And I am pleased to see the build-out of Station 14 in Councilmember Harris's district. I know we had all hoped that would be done sooner, but I hope that this one can stay on track. That really needs to be done. The youth pipeline program is incredibly important to me at Valley and Endercombe High Schools. I stole the idea from you, Councilmembers Jennings and Carr, to do it at Endercombe as well, and I'm super proud already of what that is doing for the youth in our city. I think the equipment upgrades are important. I will remind this council, it wasn't that long ago, we realized that those of you who are medics were breathing diesel while you were in the ambulances, and I'm really glad that we were able to replace that equipment, but I also don't want to put you back in a situation where we're doing that again, so it's important to stay on top of that. I think the civilian positions are a good move on your part, allowing you to put as many firefighters out on the street as possible. I noticed you mentioned the Mobile Integrated Health System, which is a program the mayor and I are both keenly interested in because we think it will help with call volume, but you didn't ask for funding in this, did you? Or I heard you speak about it, but I didn't see it in this budget funded. I miss it, Chad.
Chad, take that one.
Hey.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Mobile Integrated Health has been a three-year program for us. It's been a partnership with the hospital council. The four major hospitals, UC Davis, Kaiser, Sutter, and Dignity have funded that program. They have committed first-year funding, and just recently, they've committed second-year funding. Metro Fire is getting ready to deploy the first unit. I'm going to be optimistic in the next 90 days, which will specifically address the highest utilizers of 911.
That's great. And so I would assume after that, it's great that the hospitals are funding it for us and that Metro is stepping in. Does that mean when we get some, maybe a couple of years of data, that then there would probably be an ask to the city to fund that program as well?
The program really is a pilot program for proof of concept. We will be going back to the hospitals with a shared savings, and then our goal is that they will help because of those savings that we're providing to the hospitals by reducing hospital visits, that they will assist us with funding that.
That would be great if we could figure out a way to have them with the ongoing costs. The Mobile Integrated Health System helps us really address a hard-to-reach population that I know this council is trying desperately to reach, and I think that's fantastic, and that you found a way to do it off of the budget is incredible. And then I don't know, Chad, whether this would be for you or the chief, but I've heard over the last six months several times Station Nine brought up, and quite frankly, in my time on this council, I've heard Station Nine brought up many, many, many times. And so I'm just wondering if there is a need there. You know, the last station brought online was mine, it was 43. And what I remember about that is that it was very difficult to bring it online, and once we did, it was obviously a great impact to my district, but it also represented a two-minute improvement in response time citywide. And so I know we haven't added to the fire department since then. That was early in my tenure here, and I've been here, this is my ninth year, so quite some time since we've added. Can you talk to me a little bit about, do we need Station Nine? What is the timeframe on that for you? What would it do citywide? What does it mean for us?
Well, Station Nine, obviously, the main thing with Station Nine is because of the cannabis buildup in that area.
The cannabis?
Yes.
East Coast accent, I could barely get cannabis. Okay, yeah.
As long as I don't hit you with a "you all" or "yo."
Okay.
But because of that buildup, the response times would be greatly enhanced by opening Station Nine, and the choice was also with Station Nine, since we actually have the building already there, it would be more cost-effective to put that station back up than building from the ground up.
I see.
That was one. I just wanted to go back one more thing that Chad didn't mention on the integrated health, is the first unit that is up is actually, is from SAC Metro. However, they're also going to help us with our high utilizer. The second unit is going to be here in the city.
One is the one in the city's mental health and the one in the county is the...
Yes, basically.
Okay, is the...
So that, the pilot program is going to cover both of them. Theirs is going to go up first, and ours is going to follow.
Very good. Okay. So, and on Station Nine, then you think you do need it. It would be helpful with the cannabis. What would it do citywide, though?
Citywide, well, it's, obviously would give us a 25th station, but in that entire area, not only would it cut down on response times getting into that area, as I related earlier, whenever we have a major incident, it would add another resource into my entire system here for covering other parts of the city during those type of things, and help with the surrounding companies knock down the utilization, hour utilization, the UHU's, as we talked of, down slightly in that area. And it would also give me an area for, in the future, to be able to put another medic unit in. Part of my issue is now is, even as I need more medic units, as I said, basically, all my medic units are, except for one, is over the UHU, it'll give me some place to house it. I'm running out of room. I just don't have the areas to put medic units. Right now, even a proposed plan I'm looking at is I got to stack units in one station because I just don't have the facilities.
Okay. Thank you. From my standpoint, I know that the city manager's budget doesn't hit every point that the firefighters would like, and there may be, I know that there's a significant amount of support in the community for additional public safety, but I do think that city manager you have struck a good chord here, and maybe we need to figure out some timing on Station Nine, or at least get more information about that, what it would mean in the future. But I would, at a minimum, support the city manager's budget as it relates to the fire department. Thank you both for your great work, and to the men and women of our department, I appreciate you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thanks again, Mayor. You know, since there's so many firefighters present, I just want to thank you for what you do to save the American River Parkway. 15s and 19s, even 8s and other stations, you know, respond to fires on the Parkway, mostly set by the homeless population. And, you know, without your timely response, we would really be in a tough situation. We've had some pretty serious fires out there, and you guys, with your new units, get out there in the rough and tumble and get those fires put out. And actually, during the car fire, there was a tremendous response in River Park, not far from my house, and believe me, you know, when it gets close to your own house, you really pay attention and you understand the service that the fire department delivers. So, I just want to take a moment to thank you all. You know, Chief, I'm a big fan of your plan to move into a more efficient response on medical calls, and specifically so that the proper resources are sent out to each call. You know, it's a very important thing to do. With that efficiency, we can free up money to get you resources for all these other projects that you need to do in the fire department, and I'm very supportive of the energy and the creativity that you've brought to Sacramento. So I'm glad you're here, and I really appreciate, you know, the times that we spent together and talked about the big picture of the fire department, how to approve it across the board. Of course, integrated mental health is very important. You know, the fact of the matter is firefighters spend most of their time transporting homeless to the emergency rooms and then putting out fires that they set. That is a pretty big chunk of the workload. And so attacking that and being efficient about how we manage that as part of our response to homelessness generally is a very important piece of the puzzle. Like my council colleague, Angelique Ashby, I support the mayor's budget. I think that the, sorry, the city manager's budget.
He said it.
You know, the hour is late, and I'm forgetting a few things here, I admit it freely, but the city manager's budget, I think, reflects a really good use of Measure U for restorations of the fire department, and frankly, Measure U has been essential to get the fire department, you know, back from a very decimated position with brownouts of numerous stations and a real lack of personnel, so we're getting back into a solidly functional territory. And there are more, there are more needs that you have. I think that at least some of them have been well addressed in this budget. But the efficiency thing is very important, you know? The way we do efficiencies citywide in every department is something that we need to look at. And in fact, you know, we've hired a consultant, management partners, to help us understand where our budget's going and how to express efficiencies in every department. So that'll be interesting when they come back with their report. I think it's maybe as soon as next week, but it will give us, you know, information to make really solid decisions about where to go with this budget. You know, Measure U is, it's important to the city. Coming out of the Great Recession, we really needed to do something drastic, and in fact, the fire department was very instrumental in helping pass the first half cent, for which I think the entire council is very grateful. You know, there is a bit of a debate about how to manage the second-half penny. I, again, like, and it's no secret, I put out an article about it, that I think that the ballot language, you know, was very important to the voters, and that's probably why it passed. And I think that there are maybe some misconceptions out there about, you know, what the ballot language actually meant, because other things were said about Measure U and what it could possibly represent. So, you know, we'll have to wrestle with that. That's a political decision on the council side of the dais here. But this budget, the manager's budget, is, I think, very representative of what we wanted to happen with Measure U, you know, to get restorations to all departments, to try to keep it fairly equal, to look for efficiencies, to free up as much money as we can. You know, Measure U is a real, it's a real boon to the city. It gives us money to work with that we just didn't have. You know, we struggled for years, just trying to get our nose above water, and we're in a much better position than we've been for a very long time. I think that we have to use the money wisely, be very frugal. You know, it's also not a secret that I'm not a fan of putting any debt on Measure U because I think it's risky, but I think if we manage the money well and we look for those efficiencies, that we can do really great programs with the money, and part of that would be more restorations for public safety. So, thank you, Mr. Manager, for doing a good job.
Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, help me understand if there's a relationship between the insurance rates that our citizens pay and the fire department for fire insurance?
Well, it comes down, it partially comes down to whatever your ISO rating is in the city. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, our ISO rating is a two, okay? But just by adding fire stations, that would not improve the ISO rating. It comes down everything from your water system, it's a very complex thing, and I am by no means, no authority on that. However, as you know, when you purchase a home, one of the, one of the things that they will ask you is where the closest fire hydrant is, where your closest fire station is, because they do play into that, you know, in their formula, the actuaries use, they play into your response time. So, as we have, and as the congestion builds in the city and you have fire stations more closely located because of, it takes longer to respond, that does play into your insurance rate.
So we're rated at a two now?
We are an ISO-two rating, yes, sir.
ISO-two. If we move to one, how much would that save us?
It would, it would, well, again, I'm not an expert, but it would be a heavy lift and quite expensive for us to move to A-two, and it would take a lot of, a lot of hard work by a lot of people, other than the fire department, just, not just the fire department, to get us to an ISO-two rating. Very few, very few major cities are an ISO-one. It's not impossible, but it's just a big commitment.
But it's a heavy lift.
Yes, sir.
Is it difficult to determine how heavy that is?
It's, is it difficult? No, it's not difficult, it's difficult to get there. When you, when you see what the lift is, you'd realize it would be a substantial investment of money just to get us there, too.
And we need some ideas to what that would save people.
I couldn't venture that, I don't want to mislead anybody.
Do we have any idea where our budget for fire sits with similar-sized cities? I know you can't do apples to apples because they're all different, all different geography, but where, how do we sit?
The, I can compare to other mid-sized and large cities, and we are approximately, we are less than half from some of the major cities, but again, you know, there's a lot of things that go into that factor, you know, how to, the figure, you know, to figure it out. I mean, I've been, where I came from, the budget was two-hundred-and-sixty-nine million for the fire department. Here, we're right now currently about one-hundred-and-eighteen-point-seven million.
That was Philadelphia.
Yes, sir.
Big city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Carr. Councilmember Hanson.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thank you. I think you've got a lot of really good things happening in the department. Obviously, you've got amazing folks who are saving lives, stopping burning buildings from happening, and --
I already do.
Providing the life safety that the city needs. I've asked repeatedly, probably for three or four years, and this isn't a criticism of you, but we haven't gotten the Fire Master Plan that was promised when I broke, right before I broke my leg in 2016. Didn't call an ambulance because I was able to get to the hospital on my own, but where are we with the Fire Master Plan that would really help us answer some of the questions Mr. Carr asked? I know that a lot of the firefighters came up here and talked about call volumes and station locations. Where is that plan? I see you look at the city manager, so maybe we'll have the city manager tell us, because I am so confused as to why we have never been presented with the Fire Master Plan.
Because we have several iterations of the master plan that we've gone through with the former chief, we've been working with Local Five-two-two. Since the new Chief Loesch has come on board, he's taken a look at what's been drafted already, making some adjustments, and continues to work with the union, and so we have, Chris Conlon is not here, but I think we're in one of our final drafts, and there's some edits that are going through our legal department as well, and then we will bring that back to the council.
I think it took Robert Carroll less time to write the books on LBJ and others, or, you know, War and Peace probably could have been written in this amount of time, and so I just, I don't say that to be sarcastic, but I guess it was sarcastic. So, I say that because I don't understand why we can't make decisions year after year, and why it takes so long, and I, I've heard the same, you know, it's going through edits, or it's not ready, and after a while, it feels like that's just another punt, and, you know, people accuse us of being politicians. And I guess, you know, we, we need that to make these decisions about the fire department, staffing levels, insurance coverage, you know?
Sure.
So what is a date that we will get that?
I don't, I mean, would you say, Chief, that we're, you know, sixty days away?
I would say sixty days is reasonable. I would say that there was, the master plan, when I, when I got here, was somewhat in disarray, and we've, we've worked hard to get it pulled together with, I would say, within sixty days for sure. It's not something, it's not a small --
Oh, no, I know, but --
Almost war.
I think about two or three months ago, I was told it's bound and ready to be delivered, and so I, I, forgive me for being skeptical, that sixty days, you know, we lose these dates, you know, they come up, but this is really important for us to make this decision. I would like that sooner, at least a readout of it. I don't need to read the full thing, but I need to know what it says to make a decision about the fire budget. Maybe we're not going to get it before June eleventh, it sounds like, because sixty days is too far out, but if it says we need more fire stations, or more ambulances, or more firefighters, that would be a reason why it's being held up, in my opinion, but maybe that's not the reason it's being held up, but the mind gets very cynical about why it takes so long to do things that seem so straightforward.
It's not as straightforward as you would think.
Nothing is.
We're almost three years, three-plus years into the process, and so I would hope that it's more straightforward than that, but I digress. If you can commit that by the end of July, we'll have it?
If you don't have the final by the end of July, you will have at least seen a draft.
Okay, I will take your word on it, Mr. City Manager. I know we've been here for a long time, I've been here since a meeting started at one o'clock with Councilmember Ashby, but I'll just say, I looked at all the new spending on the fire department and the budget, and I think that the city manager proposal is good. I hear a lot of people complimenting that, and there's a reason, you know, it's got thirteen-point-two to five million dollars of extra money, coming mostly from Measure U for fire station replacement, new staff, I think there's thirty new positions, I can't remember. Is that right, Chief?
Yes.
About thirty-point-five new positions?
Yes, thirty and a half.
So, you know, I also know that the contracts, ironically, Mr. Bailey and Mr. Andrew, the contract's up in a couple of months, and we're going to have to figure out salary, and that's a big part of the bogey here that's not being talked about, but fire department, it's the second-largest department in the city, more than double, if not three times the Parks, it is three times the Parks Department, with the same number of staffs. Parks Department has seven-hundred-and-two FTE for thirty-nine million dollars. The fire department has a hundred-and-twenty-two million-dollar budget for seven-hundred-and-eleven FTE, that's with the augmentation. We care a lot about the fire department. The budget reflects that we care a lot, maybe we need to care more about parts of it, service delivery, salary, but I would say that those people who say that we don't care about the fire department, it's reflected here. The thing, though, that I'm very concerned about, and I've raised this before, right now, the city is putting seventy-nine million dollars roughly into a department with zero FTE. That, that department is the PERS department, which will grow to a hundred-and-thirty-one million dollars in several years with zero FTEs. And I just, I don't know, we're trying to manage a bunch of different things, but I didn't hear anybody really talking about that, and I think that that is the thing we're grappling with. As much as I can tell you how much I appreciate all of you, we have to get through the contract negotiation, we have to adopt a budget probably first, but then we have to figure out how to manage this set of challenges ongoing, and the Fire Master Plan will help me with some of it, to Mr. Carr's questions about performance metrics, but I do think we need a path where the fire department, the Five-two-two, all the other labor groups and departments figure out how we're going to manage this challenge collectively. I still don't see someone coming forward and say, "I have an idea, I'm willing to figure this out with you, there's a lot of posturing, but I know that this is not, this is a zero-sum game to some extent, but it doesn't have to be a zero-sum result, because we want to invest in you." And we are, I believe we'll adopt this fire department budget, which does a lot of things. I'd like to know which things are a part of the inclusive economic investments and helping disadvantaged neighborhoods, but thirteen-point-two-five million dollars is a pretty good start on top of the existing budget, so, good job, Chief.
Thank you, Councilmember Hanson. I want to make a couple of closing comments here, since, I forget the last word here. It's interesting to me, I see Dick Mayberry in the audience there, former Local Five-two-two president, it's, you ask yourself, what changes over a long period of time? Because in my long public service career, I have always been seen, up until, I suppose, recent years, as a great friend to firefighters, always was. I was when I was on the city council, and I certainly was the go-to, if you talk to your state leadership, on all issues, big and small, when I was in the state legislature. And now I come back to the city, and I suppose I see the world differently than you do now. My values have not changed in any way. I still believe public safety is the most important part of a city's responsibility, and yet, I'm tasked, as the mayor of the city, to one, look at the big picture, and two, to look at the long term, and here is, again, what I see. You say you're not getting nearly enough, and you're getting short-changed, and you talk about this bait and switch. I would remind you, those who came up and talked about the ballot label, read the whole thing, because it also included other essential services, including specifically homeless services, affordable housing, high-wage job promotion, and youth programs. So that was also contemplated by the voters, but more importantly than that, I look at the city's manager's proposed budget, and again, even though it's complicated, I distinguish between the current year and the out-years. The city manager proposes, between this year's budget and the mid-year, if you count for that, and you can either leave that in or out, depending on how you look at it, takes the third quarter of the full cent. In other words, public safety gets most of the full, of the first half cent, as you're right, you campaigned for that, and you carried the lion's share of it, actually. I wasn't on the council at the time, it was 2012. It's fifty million dollars or so, it's been mostly public safety, you continue to receive all of that. And then with the second half cent, which may have put you in a, in a, in a all-or-nothing position, but we did win, and I don't expect any thank you, but we do have an extra fifty million dollars now that we're, that we're able to at least argue about here, but as I look at that second fifty million dollars, the city manager's budget includes proposals largely around public safety, some for economic development, that add up to between seventeen and twenty-three or twenty-four million dollars. Twenty-three million dollars, okay? That leaves the last quarter cent, if you include the mid-year, and you come here and say that we are short-changing you. We see the world differently. I'm no less a supporter of public safety than I was as a member of the city council in my thirties, as the state legislative leader, the exact same person, but I also believe something fundamental that nobody wants to talk about, and that is, if all we do is take the money we've raised, even the Measure U money, and put it into the general fund as you want, because of the numbers that Councilmember Hanson just recited, it will all be eaten up within two and a half to three years, and there will not be any room to add Station Nine, or to add any of these other services. The only way out of that conundrum is, yes, some talk about efficiency, but more importantly, we need a growth strategy in this city. We need to invest in these neighborhoods that have been left behind and forgotten for a long time. We need to build an economic base, we need to put more people to work. That's ultimately going to be the savior of public safety. That's the way we're going to pay for the pensions, and the way we're going to pay for the added services. So, you know, I've been at this a long time, and none of this is new to me, and I respect that the fact, I respect the fact that you come out here and you advocate strong for your point of view, I respect that, and I'm going to continue leading the city in the way, in the way that I think is best for all of the people, and to try to make sure that while we spend the vast majority of our resources on public safety, as we must and as we should, that we also have a growth strategy, a neighborhood strategy, that we're investing all across our cities so that more people can benefit, and we can pay for those public safety services over time. So it's a good discussion, I thank you all for coming, and let's move on to the police. Thank you. Chief Hahn.
I just impressed myself that I know how to do that. Good evening, Mayor and City Council, I'm Daniel Hahn, your police chief, and I'm here to present you with the summary of the police department's proposed budget, the budget adjustments, Measure U update, and our department objectives, along with assets, seizure master plan. Police Department's proposed fiscal year twenty budget totals one-hundred-and-forty-six-point-seven million dollars. This represents an increase of approximately three-point-five million from our amended FY nineteen budget. The eight-point-five million increase represents labor costs, including salaries and PERS, and additional Measure U and grant positions, which includes fifteen officers and twenty-two community service officers. The four-point-five million increase in services, supplies, fleet, and property is primarily made up of funding for vehicle replacement totaling three-point-three million that will be moved to the police department fleet multi-year operating project. This is done on an annual basis. The balance of the increase is attributable to vehicle repair and maintenance, fuel, and administrative adjustments made during the fiscal year mid-year, fiscal year nineteen mid-year process. The external funds offset increased by nine-point-five million. This is due to increased Measure U and grant funding, as well as increased labor costs. Total staffing has increased by a net of thirty full FTE positions in the fiscal year proposed budget, from one-thousand-and-forty-point-four positions to one-thousand-seventy-point-four positions. This increase is made up of administrative adjustments and additional Measure U hiring grant and can, Measure U funding, hiring grant, and cannabis enforcement positions that include, again, twenty-two community service officers, fifteen police officer positions, offset by a cops hiring grant, and three police officer positions for the cannabis enforcement. As you recall, PD has now, now has fifteen cannabis enforcement positions, which breaks down to three teams, one for each police substation. Police budget, the police department proposed budget adjustments in the general fund are as follows. Five-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand dollars for the Impact Team, these funds will be used to continue seven-day-a-week coverage for the Impact Team on an overtime basis. Should this not be funded, the Impact Team will only be able to staff these efforts four days per week, as opposed to our current seven-days-per-week coverage. As you know, Impact, the Impact Team is a critical component of our efforts pertaining to mental health, homeless outreach, three-one-one complaints, and connections to service providers for our unhoused population, and we recently added a social worker that you have funded to assist these efforts. The proposed Measure U capital improvement program adjustment of three-point-five million, as discussed at our earlier meeting at two o'clock, consists of critical IT infrastructure to support network, infrastructure, licensing, and other systems. Without funding, this will result in an inability of our -- Without funding, this will result in an inability of our personnel to provide core services to our city. It also funds the body worn camera program. Without this funding, the department will not be able to sustain the body worn program, which will significantly diminish the department's transparency efforts. It also supports the police fleet, technology, and equipment to replace and upgrade mobile data computers, in-car camera system, and the ballistic doors in the patrol vehicles. These funds are critical to keeping the patrol fleet and the personnel who operate them operational. In terms of the in-car cameras, the system is nearly seven years old and is failing. Spare parts are scarce, causing repair times and costs to increase. Given the age of the current system, the video quality is low resolution compared to the emergency in-car camera solutions. ICCs provide for other perspectives that the body cameras do not, such as interior of the squad car, vehicle pursuits, traffic stops, and the perspective outside the squad car prior to officers getting out. The MDCs, our MDCs are also outdated, making repair parts scarce, difficult, and costly. In addition, the current MDCs are only supported by the 3G internet connection. However, Verizon will discontinue 3G service at the end of this year. New MDC laptops will provide a 4G network connection to maintain access to vital information systems while officers are in the field. The updated systems will allow our personnel to be more efficient, as they'll be able to remove the laptops from the vehicles and do their report writing and other critical activities. And lastly, ballistic door shields. Ballistic door panels are essential to officer safety and should be replaced every five years, per industry standards. In addition, we're also cited by OSHA for failing to provide ballistic protection in our patrol vehicles. Measure U, the fiscal year 20 proposed PD budget also includes forty point seven million in Measure U funding. Eight point eight million of that is proposed for new projects, part of which is the capital improvement program you heard earlier, and also policy management software. This will enhance the department's policy development, updating, and management, while adding a training component. It will ensure policies are caught up to current legislative and legal requirements. Fully updating SACPD's policies should reduce civil litigation by bringing all policies up to current legal standards and help ensure we have the best possible policies for our community and our personnel. The only viable alternative would be to add positions to track legislative updates, to conduct legal analysis, and write policy. Communities Against Sexual Harm, CASH, or otherwise known as CASH, is a community-based organization, and the funding would support homeless diversion for women and women with children in Sacramento County who have been commercially sexually exploited. Homeless diversion is a best-practice model that reduces the number of women and families that become homeless, and eases the demand for temporary shelter beds. Requested funding will support two years of homeless diversion. Police observation devices, or PODs. This will support a program expansion of two LPR PODs for each command, a total of eight, plus ongoing expenses. PD uses the POD video footage and LPR data to corroborate crime reports, determine suspect movement, identify suspect vehicles that lead to suspect identification, and recover stolen vehicles, along with missing persons, and capture outstanding wanted subjects. PODs have become an integral part of the many tools available to prevent, investigate, prosecute crimes, and capture suspects. If PODs cannot be added or maintained, it will hamper our ability to solve crime and protect our neighborhoods. Shot Spotted Program. This represents our portion of the cost-sharing agreement for the East Sacramento Shot Spotted Program. In partnership with Sacramento County, so far this year through April, there have been eighty-seven Shot Spotted activations through the system that have been followed up on by officers.
Chief, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, may I ask him a question?
Yeah.
So, East Sacramento Shot Spotted, that's something you haven't brought up to me previously. Wouldn't that be much better deployed in North Gate, Gardenland area, South Natomas, and that part of District Three? I mean, I'm not sure what purpose it's actually going to serve. There are not very many shots fired in East Sacramento, and currently, you know, there have been a couple of recent shootings in South Natomas, so can you address that?
Well, we'd love to add them in all the areas, but as you heard a second ago, there's eighty-seven Shot Spotted activations on that very system in just the first four months of this year. It's actually along the border, the city-county border in Oak Park.
Oh, okay. So, but you're calling that the East Sacramento Shot Spotted?
Correct.
Okay. Well, that clarifies things quite a bit, Chief.
My pleasure.
I think the connotation, you know, there is probably different for most people in their minds, so it makes sense, thank you.
It's a partnership. Glad we could clear that up. The next two items I'm going to talk about are the Hiring Pipeline and the Cops Hiring Program. These help us address critical issues within the police department and the city, in addition to providing public safety in our city, it will also assist hiring in general, diversity hiring, and better equip our department to fulfill the philosophy of community-oriented policing. First, in regards to hiring, in 2013, we had six thousand six hundred and sixty-eight applicants for the position of police officer. Last year, in 2018, we only had three thousand four hundred applicants. Sixty-six percent of those applicants never showed up for the test. That's consistent historically. Forty-four percent of the people that showed up flunked the initial written test. This is all before they go to backgrounds, and all before they get into the academy. As you can see, we have a significant hiring problem. Our department-wide staffing has significantly decreased as our population and activities have increased. In 2008, we had eight hundred and five sworn police officer positions with a population of four hundred and sixty-one thousand. This year, 2019, in our proposed budget, we are proposed to have seven hundred and forty-seven full-time equivalent police officer positions. We currently have six hundred and sixty-one actual police officers with a population of over five hundred thousand. Patrol staffing has decreased over the last several years. In 2010, we had a high of three hundred and nine officers signed up in our patrol division, again, with a population of four hundred and eighty-six thousand. This year, we signed up two hundred and forty officers, sixty-plus officers less than we did nine years ago, with a larger population of over five hundred thousand. Non-career entry-level programs, such as the Community Service Officer Program, are more diverse, and we do not have as many challenges finding applicants. This is truly the hiring pipeline of our future. The CSO program has reduced response time to calls such as burglary reports and traffic collisions. The program has also increased our ability to live the philosophy of community-oriented policing by taking some of the workload off of our sworn staff, so they have the time to carry out the philosophy of community-oriented policing, and CSOs themselves also are involved in community-oriented policing. This year, we have also seen crime increase. For the first time in recent years that I can remember, this year has seen increases in every single Part One crime categories, except for homicide. Calls for service are up, mental health-related calls are increasing rapidly in our city. So far this year through April, we have received five hundred and seventy-one more mental health-related calls than we did the same time last year. We responded to an average of thirty-four mental health-related calls a day, up from thirty calls a day last year. Some of the ways we are addressing these things are in the proposed budget. First of all, I mentioned the Hiring Pipeline. This expansion includes the addition of twenty-two community service officer positions, plus associated service and supplies. These are entry-level training positions to prepare individuals for full-time police officer academy. They initially go through an eight-week CSO academy that prepares them to respond to calls that are not in progress and are not violent, such as I mentioned earlier, traffic collisions and burglary reports. Response times for these types of calls have decreased from fifty-six minutes to thirty-eight minutes, as a direct result of the CSO program. This allows our police officers to be available for more serious calls for service and engage our community more fulfilling, and fulfilling our community-oriented policing philosophy. The Hiring Pipeline has shown to be successful in recruiting and retaining diverse candidates in preparing them for a career in law enforcement. Sixty-three percent of our current CSOs are gender or racially diverse.
Chief, what's the difference in costs? Is it about ninety thousand all-in versus a hundred and twenty or so?
I believe officers are about a hundred and thirty.
Officers are about a hundred and thirty.
They're part-time, too, so.
Yeah.
As a side note, not as part of our budget, eighty-seven percent of our student trainees are gender or racially diverse also. Not being able to expand this program would hinder our efforts to fill core vacancies and challenge our efforts of diversity in our department. The second, the police officer positions. The 2017 Cops Hiring Grant helps us with fifteen police officer positions, plus five vehicles and associated services and supplies. This includes a grant offset of over six hundred and fifty thousand. If the police department does not start filling positions in July, it will either have to amend the grant award for fewer positions, or cancel the grant entirely, because the positions will not be filled for the three-year performance period and the one-year retention period. This grant provides approximately a third of the salary for each officer over the first three-year period. Lastly, IT critical infrastructure. Funding includes non-capital expenditures for monthly 4G cellular connectivity costs, computer operating system licensing, auditing software, network software, data storage refreshes, mobile data terminal access, county intelligence systems, and miscellaneous services and support costs, of which I understand none of those. If this funding is not received, it will become increasingly difficult or impossible to support systems due to failing hardware, lack of support contracts, and insufficient licensing for police staff to utilize software essential to performing their job duties. Measure U. The next, I want to provide some updates on the total proposed Measure U budget. I won't go over each line, as you can see on the table, as we've already gone over most of these, but I do want to discuss a couple of things. As discussed on the previous slides, the proposed Measure U budget totals forty point seven million, which includes funding of sustained, funding to sustain existing commitments, approximately thirty-one point nine million, and that equals a hundred and ninety-nine FTE positions, and to support new programs totaling eight point eight million and thirty-seven new positions. The new positions, like we said earlier, consist of fifteen officers and twenty-two CSOs. Our city is growing, is a growing vibrant city and in population. The moratorium in Natomas has been lifted, Delta Shores is expanding, the rail yards have seen new life, and these positions will help us address current and future workload. I'd like to briefly go over our objectives, department objectives. First one is continue to build a trusting and collaborative relationship in the community. I won't go over everything we do in this area, but I just wanted to hit a few high points. Walk in My Shoes Program, that hopefully all of you have heard of, where we pair officers with community members. The Academy Community Engagement Program in our elementary schools, the community members on our promotional panels and various committees throughout the department, transparency by maintaining, enhancing, and expanding the department transparency page, the release of videos that are of public interest, and in accordance with council directive and the new laws such as SB 1421, Day of Service for our police recruits, and the list goes on. The second objective, continue to increase staffing that represents our community, continuing our SACPD boot camp program, various locations, primarily community centers throughout the city, continuing our Lex program at SAC State, and expanding that to City College and Consumus River College, and continuing our pre-hire and community officer, community service officer academies, as I mentioned earlier. The next objective, expand and enhance implicit bias and cultural awareness efforts. We're currently developing a curriculum and ongoing program with American Leadership Forum and UC Berkeley, and we're also working with organizations such as Stanford University's Center for Policing Equity, the State Department of Justice, and a few others, to provide training to department personnel and community groups. And last objective, continue to build the morale by, build morale by valuing employees and providing the best possible training resources and leadership. Some of the ways we are doing that are identifying and promoting employee appreciation, providing mentoring for employees at all levels, and increasing transparency throughout the department and the community, and implementing the ballistic doors in all the squad cars, and continuing our body worn camera and in-car camera programs. At this time, I briefly go over the asset seizure program. Per city policy, the police department is required to present the city council an annual plan for the expenditure of asset forfeiture funding. Asset forfeiture is the result of court ordered, of court of law determining that assets seized during criminal investigations are ill-gotten gains of illegal activities. By law, a portion of the forfeited assets are provided to the police department to support frontline law enforcement. The proposed spending plan for FY-20 totals a little over six hundred thousand dollars. Allowable uses of funds are included on this chart, as you see before you, I won't go over each one. By state statute, fifteen percent of the forfeitures must be maintained separately for the purposes of supporting anti-drug, gang prevention, and intervention programming, and the resulting allocations agreed upon by a panel consisting of the district attorney, the sheriff, chief probation officer, and the respective police chief. In accordance with state statute, seventy-two thousand of the asset forfeiture funds for anti-drug and gang prevention funding will be used to support programs and help nearly two thousand high-risk elementary and secondary school-age students. Current partnerships for those contracts run through the end of the current calendar year. Some of that, forty-three thousand dollars of that funding goes to support our Criminal Justice Magnet Academies that support over six hundred students. Funding also supports, thirty-six thousand dollars of the funding supports the Police Activities League that supports the rugby program, fishing program, ski and snowboard, and boxing that serves over seven hundred youth. Also, we fund the Boys and Girls Club for a little over seven thousand for their basketball program that serves about three hundred youth. Also, the City of Refuge that supports their shine and grit programs in elementary schools in our city that supports a hundred and ninety students. And lastly, our Cops and Kids Program for twenty-two thousand that supports a summer camp that serves over three hundred youth from throughout our community. Programs are selected on, based on a proven track record of success in our community. I was going to show a video at this point, but unless you really want me to show the video, I will close the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Chief Hahn. We have a couple of members of the public.
I always got my body cam in my radio.
At first glance...
That's the video we're not showing.
I guess we'll watch the video. Thank you, Chief Hahn. I think we've got a couple of members of the public sign up to speak.
I have two speakers. The first is Timothy Davis, and then Kayla Scott.
Timothy Davis, President of Sacramento Police Officers Association. A decade ago, the city was faced with near bankruptcy when the last economic recession hit. Crippling debt left the city with few options, and it was forced to slash its budget. Between 2008 and 2011, the city slashed three hundred positions from the police department and thirty percent of the police budget. While the SPOA agreed to reductions in salary in an attempt to avoid layoffs, the layoffs still came. The police department laid off police officers and eliminated traffic enforcement, pop officers, and several investigative divisions. Laying off employees is more than just giving out pink slips. It is saying goodbye to members of your family. It is giving away our investment in our employees. It devastates the families who are let go, and it harshly affects those who remain. While our city's rapid growth has caused our population to pass the half-million mark, we have yet to return to our staffing levels from 2008. Measure U was marketed to the public as a way of ensuring public safety in Sacramento, and its approval was a referendum on fully funding public safety in Sacramento. The city manager's budget continues the long road of restoring staffing in the police department, and keeps Measure U funding where it belongs, in the general fund. Measure U is a general tax, and the plan to remove Measure U revenues from the general fund and then bond against them violates a promise made to voters. While the city council cannot control or predict what the economy will do in the next five years, you can control our budgets and spending. The council can either use excess funds in these good years to pay down debt, to complete the backlog of public works projects, or even identify prudent, pay-as-you-go economic development projects. But instead, this council is deliberating if it should mortgage our future. The proposed bonding fiasco could cripple the city in years to come and leave a future council to sort out the next round of budget cuts and employee layoffs. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Kayla Scott.
Good evening, my name is Kayla Scott. I live in District Six. Right now, the American criminal justice system is in a state of crisis, because when police officers fear for their lives, they are allowed to violate constitutional rights and kill on impulse without consequence. That horrifies me, because that means that the police are above the law. And either no one wants to hold them accountable, or nobody can. This distrust is building, because our district attorney took thirteen thousand dollars from the police union two days after Stephon Clark was killed, and then said that Stephon Clark died because of his mental state, when I saw Stephon Clark get denied due process. And they went into someone's backyard in the darkness and started shooting with no regard for public safety. That horrifies me, because what we're saying, when you allow this to happen and you don't respond to it, is that we're putting fear before our safety. And unfortunately, when it comes to the police, their fear is not rational, it's irrational. And unfortunately, when it comes to the police, their fear is not rational, it's irrational. My cousin was shot in the face twenty-five times, and he was sleeping in his car. So the message that's being sent to me as a black American is that it's not what I do that leads you to fear me, it's who I am. And I would like more transparency included in the budget, especially for my relief of anxiety. I propose that we have an online forum or an online profile that allows us to see who our police officers are in Sacramento PD. That includes background, history, education, experience, and audio of the body cam footage that they produce when they, you know, go into the forest, into the environment, because that will at least allow me to police my officers instead of allowing them to escalate that irrational fear. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Chief, could I ask you a question? So, you know, the hour's late and I'm not a hundred percent here. Did you say that the impact team is not fully funded for seven days, that that would be an augmentation that needs to happen in the current budget?
Correct. We've been seven days this last year, so we'll continue that, but it would need to be augmented.
It would need to be augmented. Well, I would say that I'm certainly in favor of that. You know, the impact team has proved essential to us in our homeless response. And in fact, I was speaking to one of your captains yesterday, and he said, he longed for the day when, when, actually, he was helping me with a homelessness public forum. He said, "I long for the days when we talked about crime." You know, I mean, the fact of the matter is, as with the fire department, much of the police resources are spent dealing with the homeless crisis. It's just a fact of life these days, and the impact team has proven essential to that, I think, in many ways. So, Mr. City Manager, I'd just like to register that I think that that's a pretty essential service, and I would be in favor of adding that to the budget. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, Community Against Sexual Harm is a very vital program. They do a tremendous service, and I definitely support the one-time funds in the budget for cash. Other than that, again, I'm in favor of your budget, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Ashby.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Chief, first of all, proud of you for staying up this late. That's pretty good for you.
That's my bedtime.
Yeah. Also, to the young lady, was it Kayla? Did you say Kayla? I'm impressed with you, too, stay that long through all of that meeting to share your comments. Good for you. Cash is a great organization, and I think that's great. I also want to commend you. You have a knack for picking the right entities in the right communities that have the kind of impact that you're looking for. So, Boys and Girls Club, fantastic, City of Refuge, Cops and Kids, those are really good organizations, and I am proud of you for choosing them. The main thing I wanted to say about your budget isn't really to you, but just, you know, I, as I sit here at this dais, and I watch people come, and they ask for things like body cameras, that was such a big fight to get them, and I'm really glad that we have them. I think everybody's glad that we have them. But then, then we have to pay for them, and we have to make sure that we have the IT structure, and that we have people who review those body cameras, and that we have the equipment to keep the data for as long as we need it, for exactly what people are talking about, for transparency, and that's what's in this budget, right? The ability to actually utilize those body worn cameras the way they're intended to be used so that we do have transparency and so that people can see the interactions. So, and the other thing I really like about this budget, there's two things. One is the staff to comply with the SB fourteen twenty-one, which is another transparency issue, and your ability to provide records. We can't be compliant if we don't have the staff. And then, I've also heard time and time again, people come in this chamber and say they want CSOs, which is not a police officer, but the person who shows up to help if your car gets broken into, or helps with traffic at events, or something like that. And so the fact that there are a lot of CSOs in here, I think, is great for our city. These, I think, are things that are responsive to the majority of people that have come and asked for transparency, or lower-level employees in your department who can handle some of these calls. So, I want to thank you for bringing that forward, and your relationships in the community and your commitment to that. And I also wanted to ask you, what's the name of the department that you added this year? I didn't see you mention it in here, but I know you added a department for research and?
Oh, Training, Research, and Development.
Yeah. So, I think that's really good, too, because you're doing all of this best practice research through the department to try to bring us innovative solutions. So, kudos to you. You're a great chief, and we're lucky to have you.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you so much, Chief. I know it was late, and it's very important, but glad that we're moving forward with the CSOs and all the other things that you proposed here. Thank you. Thank you. We're going to get to, yeah, we do have, so that's the, I'm getting, I'm getting there. I'm getting there. We have to, item fourteen, we don't have to take a, it's a receive and consider, item fourteen. It was on the consent calendar, so does that require a motion? No, it does not. So fourteen is dispensed with, then. Okay. So let's go back to item five, which was the one unresolved issue. I know that City Manager and members and parties tried tirelessly over the last couple of hours to try to resolve this. Where are we?
So, Mayor, Council, I think we found a path forward on item number five within the construct of the current agreement that will allow for sub catering for ethnic and specialty foods, and that Center Plate does not provide within the complex.
Are you?
I'm on.
Go ahead.
I said, we have found a path forward in terms of the request that was made earlier within the construct of the current agreement with Center Plate that's before this council today. And it does allow for sub catering for ethnic and specialty foods that Center Plate does not provide. And I want to thank Lawrence Ruha and Vicky Householder from Center Plate for their flexibility in making this happen so that we can vote on it tonight. Also, Zeon Tadasi from Queen Sheba, Malachi Aman, Mike Testa, and the city staff. One of the things that Councilmember Warren asked about earlier is that maybe if we approve this agreement tonight, which is the recommendation of the staff, is that we come back in two years' time to take a look at the breakout of the sub catering over that period of time, and just report back to this council. And that's something that we're absolutely willing to do. And so with that, staff recommends approving the agreement as is, that with the flexibility that we talked about during the, during the meeting. So, if there are any questions, we also have staff here who are part of that conversation.
Yeah, I wasn't in the room, but I would like to hear what the people in the room, is that the understanding that you have?
Yes, Zeon, Tadasi, and Malachi Aman.
Thank you, Councilmember. Our understanding when we, City Manager, well, it was Councilmember Carr that asked me to come up.
Go ahead.
Anyways, so our understanding with the city staff that was in the room was that we had an agreement so that we would be able to more or less have a week to develop some sort of policy mechanism so that the discretion on the part of Center Point as to whether or not they were going to use diverse caterers was not kind of like this gamble that we were taking. Because right now, if you extend that contract, that it's their discretion as to whether or not they're going to work with diverse caterers, and we said in that room that we weren't trying to interfere with the contract going forward, we just wanted a minor policy change to ensure that when event planners come, they will have an option to choose from caterers that represent the ethnic and cultural diversity of the city. And that's with attendees of one thousand or less. So we're just asking that for attendees of one thousand or less, that Center Point is always offering a menu of caterers that represent the ethnic and cultural diversity of the city. That's all we're asking for.
Howard?
And right now, it's just a.
Let Mr. Chan, please.
So, the discussion that was had in the room was that the, there's the ability for the event holders or conference planners to request for specialty caterers, and that would be subject to the discussion with Center Plate and approval, that they could meet certain quality standards in order to be able to provide catering for, you know, whether it's five hundred, a thousand, fifteen hundred people. So, that is allowed for in the current agreement.
Those event planners would have to request.
Correct.
To get that menu. So basically, they would not, if so, if someone is coming with a thousand attendees or less, they will not see a menu from ethnic and cultural caterers unless they request that menu.
That is correct.
Yeah. And that is unacceptable in our, from our position, because if they are not seeing those menus available to them, then they're not going to know that those menus are available to them. And that's an equity issue, because otherwise, we're waiting on Center Point to tell us.
Is there a way that classic catering can send out, as a matter of policy, can send out a notice to all the planners, to all the people holding the events, in the way Mr. Man said, just as a matter, can we get them to agree to send out a notice informing the event planners that they have these other options if they choose?
Like the vegan and vegetarian options?
Excuse me, I'm sorry. What's the problem with just asking them to send out, just to send out a standard notice that says, if you're interested in a diverse menu, please call us, and we will put you in touch with X, Y, X, Y, and Z, just to make that as a matter of protocol, if you will? What's wrong with that?
Members of the council, I would defer to.
Get to the mic. Get to the mic.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Matt Boyer, your general manager. I would have to defer that to the city attorney. As the exclusive provider, as outlined in the current agreement, they are the exclusive provider. There are provisions in the current contract that do talk about special events that would be available and open to local caterers, similar to what we do for Best of Sacramento, similar to what we do for Make-A-Wish, similar to what we do for the Arts and Wine Festival, that we allow outside caterers through our in-house provider permission that they meet the standard health permit. So, it is something available already in the current contract, but to put something exclusive that would determine whether or not a particular caterer, we have gone through an RFP process, and this is how the panel won.
This.
Mayor, can I ask Matthew a quick question? Would that be okay?
We've got others up in the queue here. I just want to make sure that, I'm trying to think if, I don't want to, we don't want to breach the contract here, Vicky. We don't want to do that. We don't want to create any kind of a legal hassle, but I also don't want to be here for the next hour trying to legislate this from the dais here. And we don't want to take a week because that would send the wrong signal. We understand that. So I'm trying to understand whether there could be a gentle person's agreement here in a protocol that simply either Convention and Visitors Bureau, or classic, Vicky, that you can send out a notice simply when, to everybody that says, if you're interested in ethnic fair, if you will, call us or call the following numbers, just a protocol issue as opposed to some complicated, complicated thing here. If that's not possible, then I will back off, but I'm trying to short circuit this, if it's at all possible, to make sure that, it's, this is a notice issue, just to allow the event folks to know, event planners to know that they may have options. That's all it is. That's all that it is. Can you, somebody, please?
Mr. Raw.
Hello. Lawrence Ruha, Senior Vice President with Center Plate. That is something we can certainly do. We'll have to talk with Visit Sacramento and make sure that that's okay. But from our standpoint, we communicate with our meeting planners to let them know that we provide all types of.
Just a protocol, a standard letter that makes sure that the people, the event folks know their options, and that you maybe have the list of the, of our diversity caterers here. Can you work this out informally so that we can pass this tonight and satisfy the request? Yes, this is what we're doing. As long, as long as they're agreed.
Yes.
That they're going to send out, that they're going to send out that kind of a notice, and that, that there, that these options are going to be known to everybody, you don't have to ask, the event planner doesn't have to ask, they're going to be informed about the options. That's exactly what you just asked for.
The discretion that we're concerned about.
Well.
We've been burned so many times.
I understand, but that, we have an exclusive contract here with an entity that's going to put seven million dollars in the convention center. We're not going to rewrite the contract here.
I don't want to interfere with that.
Well, but then, the best we can do is provide the notice, and, and their goodwill that they will work with any of the caterers when the event, when the event planners want to go with, want to go with the alternative. That, that's the best we can do here tonight, I think.
So we can't do what you are saying as a matter of policy?
Well, that's what I, well, how about this? How about you memorialize what I just said between the city and, and classic, memorialize it. Just memorialize it as a matter of policy, and then we can come back here and ratify it, too. That's fine. That would be, that would be fine. Is that okay? Okay. Go ahead.
Councilmember Carr? Did you already do, Larry, you already had your P? Yeah, I just, you know, I, first of all, I think, you know, it's a last-minute request, you know, what we're trying to do. And so I think if the operator is showing goodwill in this capacity, I would like to have a look-back provision that we could see how this is working out, say, over the course of two years, and we can see if the opportunities are being afforded to a diverse group of caterers. And so, you know, I think that, you know, this being an RFP, the commitment that this caterer has made to the city, I think we'd like to see, and I think what you've heard is that this city is very interested in having opportunities for others to participate in this, in this endeavor. And so I would be okay if we had a two-year review period where if, because it's not going to be just African-Americans, or just Latinos, or it's going to be, and so more people need to really understand that this opportunity is presented, and then we need to give the operator to operate in good faith, and you guys should try to work with them, okay? Now that we know that this is an issue, and there's an opportunity, possibility, and I think there is benefit to the operator working with you, and there's benefit for you guys working with them, and if the relationship works, then maybe it'll grow into something special, okay? So I think, I think what we've done here tonight is a pretty good job in short notice, so I'm willing to.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
So are we talking about policy, a policy mechanism?
I think, what I've said, I think I was pretty clear, and so why don't we, why don't, well, you know, I'd just like to, yeah, I will make a motion that we move forward. I think as a concerned body of elected officials, we want to make sure that the opportunity is presented. There's still work that has to be done by the, by the proponents of this inclusive endeavor, and I would be supportive of that, but I'm not prepared. Because this wasn't RFP, these folks responded in a timely manner, they won the RFP. I don't think we can go much further than that with.
So you're looking for a two-year look back?
Wait, wait, wait a minute. I thought I heard it was an RFP.
Supplemental.
So it was not an RFP?
No.
An extension of an existing.
Of an existing contract, though. Okay.
That goes until 2020.
Okay, the contract goes until 2020, but there were some adjustments made, and so we extended it to kind of.
Seven million dollars.
Yeah, okay.
Two thousand thirty-four.
Yeah, it's not as simple as this just being a contract that's starting right now and going forward. So, why don't we, we got goodwill, we got good energy, you heard the council's direction, I think. Let's see what we can get done, and let's come back in two years and review and see how it's going, okay?
In the meantime, I'd ask Classic to do the affirmative notice so that everybody's informed, okay? That's, that's, I think, a good addition here. So Councilmember Warren moves the staff recommendation.
Second.
Second, okay? Do you need?
I'd just go real quick.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I don't think that the Convention Center Theater Memorial are the only places we can have this conversation. We have a, and I know that this maybe doesn't matter as much, but Classic and Center Plate have been an amazing partner to the city. Through Unite Here, which is the restaurant hotel workers, we have an enormous amount of diversity in the staff, African-Americans, Latinos. They're provided high wages, good benefits, and as part of this contract, they have job security. And so. have job security. And so, when, when we do these things, we, we, we have a long, difficult process we go through, and I really appreciate the leadership of Mr. Warren tonight in trying to find a path here. I don't think we're done, but, but nobody thought this was gonna be controversial. So, the other people who care about this aren't even in the room. And I, I, I think that they deserve those workers who we see every day. There's an older, uh, there are a lot of older people, too. I, I think that we should spend some time thinking about them, and I, I'm supportive of the motion. Thank you for working it out, Mr. Warren.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Ashby.
Yeah.
It's just encourage, still work to do, so.
Okay. Yeah, we'll, we'll ke, we'll keep working on it. I wanted to thank Classic. Uh, you've been a really good partner, and I appreciate that you're willing to do this with them. And, um, and I, Malachi has been here, and he's a stalwart on trying really hard on a multiple, like, multiple levels, and he has been burned by not getting a full policy in place. So, I hope you understand why he's saying what he's saying. Uh, from my standpoint, I wouldn't expect you, and I don't think they would, expect you to advertise for other businesses, but I do think that if you put something on there that lets people know, um, that there are other options if they inquire, is fair, which is what the mayor is requesting. And I, and then a look back in two years, Malachi will tell us if you got what you needed, or if we need to do more. I think it's a really good start. They're a really great company. It's not gonna hurt them to do this, because, you know, they, they get a lot of business, and because I've dealt with them before, like, Make-A-Wish in my district does a big event there, and they have their own vendor, and Classic has been very good about it. I think you will get a good response, but if you don't, then when we come back, we'll get, and we can handle the, the policy a little bit differently.
Okay, okay. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Well, issues been joined, and we appreciate it. It was good work by everybody. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. That's the end of the agenda. Um, is there, are there any members of the public, uh, you want to read the boards and commissions?
I apologize-
I have one quick thing, too.
I apologize for the late, uh, announcement. I need to read into the records-
You have to read it all?
-and board commission appointments. To the Administration Investment and Fiscal Management Board, Manuel Leon. To the Anne Landen Bertha Henchel Memorial Fund Commission, Karen Corbs, Wanda Iñárez. And Yusaf Zamudan to the Civil Service Board, Ellen Gallagher, Gwene Beard. To the Housing Code Advisory and Appeals Board, George Antabian. To the Natomas Basin Conservancy Board of Directors, Chandra Sekir, Chil Murky. And Steve Kohn to the Paratransit Inc. Board of Directors, Molly Nugent. To the Preservation Commission, Christine Cruzes, David Lemon, and Jaclyn Whitlam. And to the Sacramento Environmental Commission, Josh Rosa. And finally, to the Utilities Rate Advisory Commission, Rachel Anne VanderWorf.
Okay, thank you. Real quickly, a few weeks ago, I asked our city auditor to bring back the efficiency study to the city council in the near-term future. I've been briefed on the status of the study. It is far from complete, and the auditor agrees with me. Consultants will not be concluded with the report until late July. With that in mind, I want to amend my request and ask that they present to the full city council when they've actually finished their project in July. Okay? Are there other members who want to counsel ideas or questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, so tomorrow night, there is a meeting at Clooney Center about, uh, meet the contractor for the McKinley Vault project. Mr. City Manager, um, I, uh, I would like to ask you to bring to Law and Legislation Committee, um, possibility to allow a cannabis dispensary in the SC zoning, the shopping center zoning. I would have asked for it at Law and Leg, it was canceled this week. And, um, I personally would, would like to have the preliminary report of management partners come to the council. It seems appropriate.
I don't want it back until it's completed. Thank you.
Well, it seems to me, since you asked for it at council-
Well, I'm now amending my request, but thank you. I would like it back when it is completed.
It seems appropriate to have a vote about-
Hey, we're, we're-
...agrees it is not completed.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Harris, you may state your point. Mayor and the, and the city manager have the charter, uh, responsibility of setting the agenda.
Setting the agenda, thank you. Mr. Har-
Does that work for you, Mr. Manager, to do that?
Well, the, the city auditor had scheduled it for next week, and he'd had discussions with the mayor on having this come back later. And I'm not sure what those conversations have been, because the full report is not done. There's only a portion that they briefed to the council.
Done. Let's finish it so that we get a complete briefing. They're not done with any of their, uh, internal look at the city, and I'd like a full report. In pieces. Thank you.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember Ashby.
Uh, I thought you asked for the shortened version. This isn't really a comment to you so much, Mayor, as it is. I, too, thought it was coming back next week. I already received a briefing. My staff received a briefing. There is information ready to bring forward to this council. I don't know why we wouldn't hear the piece. You did ask for a partial. You asked for what we have now. And, um, I talked to Jorge today. I know he couldn't be here because he's giving that presentation in Monterey, or, I'm sorry, in Modesto today. Probably wishes Monterey, Modesto. Um, but, uh, I don't know why we, I don't know why we wouldn't bring back what we asked them to hurry through. I understand there's a more complete version coming later, and I agree, that's gonna be more fruitful, but there may be information in the partial, uh, piece that he has put. It sounds to me like there is information in the partial piece that should be considered prior to this council taking a budget decision. So, um, I, I know it's not on the agenda right now, so we can't actually vote, but I think that it should come forward next week, and I would be much more comfortable hearing from Jorge, uh, and I know he just couldn't be here, as to whether or not that should happen or should not. I understand your position, Mayor, but, you know, I'd like to hear that information, and I think the public should hear it, too, if it, if it matters to our budget. And I can't quite ask that without Jorge being here, but I, this morning, asked him, and he felt that it did potentially have ramifications on our budget decision-making, so.
Since I'm the one that requested it initially, nobody else did here, I am told that the consultants have none of the efficiency information. Jorge and his team would rather rate until the report is completed. They don't have all the information, and they're not even close to having all the information.
That is not what Jorge said to me, Mayor.
Okay, well-
So, I, I would just say, maybe we could hear from Jorge when he comes back, and-
You can talk to Jorge.
Or maybe he could send the council a message, or something. He works for all of us. I, I understand they don't have the projections that you're talking about. I agree, those would be really helpful, but my understanding is that they do have financial projections based on the city manager's proposed budget, and some of the ideas that you have floated that would show, um, what that would do in our out years, beyond five years, which is what the, um, Finance Department tells us, which I think would be important for this council if we're gonna make a decision, especially if we're gonna stray far from what we normally do. We would want to know what that, what the ramifications would be on, on our budget and on our city 10, 15 years out. And that is what he is proposing to bring forward next week. I really think, here's what I don't want to be. I don't want to be the council that didn't look at that, and then we make a decision, and then 10 years from now, it's like, hey, we had that information audit, but we didn't look at it. So, I want to respect Jorge's work. I know you do, too. We asked him to do it. He presented to our colleagues. I think we should bring it forward next week as is scheduled, whatever he has. And we could always couch it with, hey, more to come, and maybe this isn't a fully complete, but it does have the projection piece, which is what you asked for. And I thought it was a good ask when you asked for it, so I think we should-
It's not why, it's not why, what I asked, uh, the cons, consultants to come back with. I asked them to come back to explain to them their formula and their model, and they talk about a model-
Yeah.
-for how they would analyze efficiencies, and how they would translate those efficiencies to budget savings. They're not ready. They've only begun their work. What they would show you in terms of projection, because I think I know what you're after here, and what Mr. Harris is after, the utility, they, they would speak to you about some of the risks to, in the city. They would speak to us about the fact that this utility lawsuit, which we have been briefed about, which is now going to go to the Court of Appeal, if, God forbid, that is upheld, it could blow a, a $31 million hole in our budget. That's what they would say to you.
I'm not worried about that piece, but I, what I would like to see is you've made some creative-
Councilmember Ashby, and, and Mayor War, uh, Mayor Steinberg, um, I'm gonna ask for the sake, and I know this is partly on scheduling, but since this is not an agendized item in discussion, you can state your point-
Okay.
-and your comment.
Okay, so, uh, my point is that, um, you, we asked them to take a look at this, bribe at, bring us an abbreviated version. My understanding from my briefing is that they have some projections for us based on some of the creative ideas that you've brought forward that we should consider. I would agree with you, the utility piece should be taken out, but the, the idea of what it would look like if we bonded, what that would mean in our future, what it would look like if we didn't bond, what Howard's budget looks like versus your budget farther years out, I think those things are worth considering prior to us taking a vote.
Thank you for your comments.
But I agree with you on the utility piece.
Thank, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Councilmember Gary.
And, uh, we do know the, the responsibilities of, uh, the mayor and the city manager to agendize items, and with that, since there are no more council members signed up to speak, we're adjourned.
[applause][1784.03]